The Ojai City Council's order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wirick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum and welcome, everybody, to another fun night at City Hall, okay? Let's see, who shall we? Ryan, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Well, I want to suggest that any items that are more just business be moved to the end that are not so much interest to the public. And I may be wrong in that, but...
Okay, well, the...
I was thinking like the fire issues, the Chapter Nine, fire hazard...
Well, why don't we do it the other way around, Suze? If those who are present, based upon the cards we're receiving, we've got like at least 10 cards interested in the Safe Streets issue. So is there any issue with moving that up to the head of the agenda?
And Mayor, I just would note that I'll be pulling K from consent.
Okay.
I was gonna move that we move the ATP meeting to another date. That's what I was gonna do.
We got 10 people here?
Right, I know. They're not here. They were all waiting for the 9:30 bell to ring because that's where it was on number eight.
Oh.
Could we have a special meeting? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, with 10 people here, they're gonna want to speak under...
They're not here.
They're not here?
No, they dropped their cards off. They're coming back.
Oh.
Oh, great.
They wanted to sit for two and a half hours. They figured...
Oh, I see. Okay, so what's your pleasure? Is it to continue the matter so people will know?
Yes.
It is a big presentation.
I make one comment about that.
Okay, Bill.
There is one issue there, Randy, on the truck management plan. And that is something that is holding up more projects than just the ATP. I was... It might... Now, maybe if that's causing a problem for staff to further hold up the truck management plan, I just want to ask the question.
Yeah, that one is Caltrans requesting it for a number of projects. So that was one that has some time sensitivity to it. But that can be done without talking about the full ATP project.
Could that be done under city manager discretion? It's only 15,000.
Yeah, we could do that.
And then we just continue with the city manager signing the contract?
Okay, so is there any change in the order of the agenda? Do we need a motion to continue the major presentation?
Yes, please.
And do I have a motion to continue that matter so people can be...
Move the ATP, item number eight, to the second meeting date in February.
Wait, I want some clarity on that. I thought we were gonna have a special meeting. What's the difference between tonight and the next crowded agenda?
Well, hopefully...
Well, if we're gonna trail the thing, if we go to the next meeting, you said the second... Are you saying the second Tuesday or the second meeting?
The second meeting in February.
Okay, that puts it all the way a month away then, right? Okay, is there a second?
I'm not sure about...
Okay, we don't have a second to the motion, so don't worry yet about it. Is there a second to that motion?
I would second if the motion could be amended to include city manager discretion to execute numbers three and four.
Yes.
Okay, so we got... Okay, Suze, what do...
I am not comfortable to support that unless I know that Greg won't delay Greg Grant. You know, there's time sensitivity, there's issues.
Okay, let's ask the question to the city manager.
Yeah, there is some time sensitivity. You know, is there any opposition to that first meeting in February?
Yeah, right. What do...
That's fine.
Okay, so we'll accept that as an amendment? Okay.
Can you check with... Is that going to be...
We've got an answer.
Yeah, we've discussed.
Okay, so the motion then is to move that item to the first meeting in February.
And could that be at the beginning of the agenda then? Since we're carrying it over?
That's quite possible, and we could even do that during the meeting when we get there. If it's for some reason it's been...
Well, I think I would support the...
Okay, the answer is yes.
Okay. Because otherwise, people have to wait and wonder, yeah.
And then proceed with three and four.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any objection to the motion then of moving this to Tuesday, the second Tuesday of February? And we'll put it at the head of the general agenda, okay?
So I have another question. The people that wanted to speak on this tonight, they could still speak under unscheduled items.
They have a right to speak on any topic under public comment if they wish.
Okay.
Hopefully, we won't do it twice or three times, but okay.
Can we make sure? I mean, do we need to talk to Greg about whether there's any other... Because we were on a pretty tight timeline, some other issues on this.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, I don't mind moving it as long as we know we're not causing, didn't cause any problems later.
Yeah, the truck management plan were the items that were critical.
I want to make sure of that. I mean, because there was all kind... I mean, if this compiles, I know we had some weird deadlines. I think it's not a problem, but...
It's a progress report.
Okay. Well, all these good people will be waiting most of the evening if we don't kind of come to a conclusion. Our city manager says that if we move it to the first meeting in February that they can work around the deadlines.
Is that what, did you say that? Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, he did.
Okay, he said that. Has anybody...
And at the beginning of the agenda?
Yes.
I really want to be clear on that.
Yes, we've said that. We've said that. Okay, you're clear. Okay, any...
I was kidding. So with those clarifications, is there any concern now? Can we... Okay, so ordered. We will move on now. And Bill, you said you were gonna pull one item from consent?
Yeah, K.
K, okay.
I have kind of a housekeeping question on K.
Okay, so, okay, so the public knows that that matter is gonna be pulled off the consent agenda and dealt with?
And I wanted to pull L.
Okay, so it's K and L. Okay, with that, with those changes, is the agenda approved?
Yes.
No objection? Okay, so ordered. Okay, we have a presentation, I believe. Is that our next... I'll get my... I'll get my hair straightened out. The presentation we do is David in the audience? Ah, there, David. David Maron from the Civic Alliance, an old colleague and friend from many years of public service and his mother before him.
I remember him from before.
Yeah, thank you.
Good to see you again.
Thank you, David, for coming up and doing this for us.
You're welcome. And some of you know me from the League of Women Voters running the forums.
Yes, that's right.
You had to endure that from me before, so thank you.
You doing that again?
I will be in the fall.
All right.
Yes, now that you've gone to districts, we'll see how it all works out.
Oh, boy.
Well, good evening to the audience, to council staff. My name is David Maron. I'm with the Ventura County Civic Alliance. And what I'm gonna do is take you through a presentation of the report. And Gail is passing out copies. And for the audience, I did bring some extra copies if a few people want to pick it up. It's also available online at civicalliance.org. So the Ventura County Civic Alliance is a regional organization that looks at issues common to the 10 cities, tries to look at the business perspective, the economic, the environmental, and the social equity. And we produce this report. We distribute it for free around the county. This is... A little feedback there, but one of the things, we can't do this without the support of our sponsors. So organizations like the Community Foundation, the Community College District, Era Energy, AT&amp;T, Channel Islands University, Cal Lutheran University, and the County of Ventura, House Automation, Limoneira, and Monacito Bank are some of our larger sponsors. We're grateful to them for their help. I'm gonna try to get through this pretty quickly and answer questions. But one of the things I wanted to point out is that the key statistics show that Ventura County is getting older. In the year 2009 or 2000, our average age was 34. Now, our average age is up to 37.5. And right here, if you look at Ojai's population, you could see that 20.7% of our population in Ojai is under 18. That's okay. But you also have 22% over the age of 65. And you could compare that to how the other cities look. So Ojai is an aging city.
Okay, David, can I interrupt you for just a second? We're getting a little feedback. Is there something we can do about that?
What?
Jeremy said I should start over. No. Okay, I'll stand a little further back, Jeremy. Agriculture, as far as Ventura County, just continues to be an important part of our economy, about $5 billion industry, and I'm sorry, $2 billion industry, 4% of the local economy. And we ship goods all around the world, avocados, lemons. United States sends it to Canada, to Japan, a lot of information. We also have a growing organic industry here in Ventura County. You're elected officials, so I always like to share the information on registration. This is countywide, going back to 2000. You could see that the registration for Democrats has stayed about even all of these years, but the Republican registration has declined over the years from a high of 42 down to about 29. And that's because more people are registering as no party preference, the green color. No party preference has come at the cost of Republicans in Ventura County, and that's why it's now becoming much more blue here. City by city, here is Ojai. Registration in Ojai, about 48% Democrat, about 22% Republican, and over 30% is no party preference. So really, in Ventura County, no party preference is the second largest party as far as registration. One of the things that there's a big effort going on in Ventura County is the nonprofits trying to raise the amount of philanthropy around the county. This shows the amount of per capita giving from different counties. Ventura County's on the bottom, about $2,500 annually. Los Angeles, Santa Barbara, much higher than us, statewide average. There's a lot of questions about that. Maybe people are donating, but they're sending it away to organizations outside our community. So in the future, you'll start hearing about a program called Live Here, Give Here, encouraging people to support local nonprofits. In the economy, Ventura County has come back from the Great Recession. This shows the number of people that are working. Often, we hear about the unemployment and the very low unemployment rate. What we're showing here is actually the number of people that are employed. And really, it took from 2009 to 2017 to get back to where we were in 2007. So we are growing, but not significantly. And one of the important things is where those jobs are. And I know here in Ojai, you can't do much to bring in manufacturing industries and high-tech companies. But the growth in jobs since the Great Recession has been in lower-paying industries. So groups like leisure and hospitality, they've seen a lot of growth. That blue bar there is the one that represents pre-recession. So that's come back. But if you look over here at, say, manufacturing, this is pre-recession, and it hasn't come anywhere near close. Same with construction, big decline. High-paying jobs like finance and information, very low. So this is not just local. This is somewhat of a national issue, transforming from a goods-producing industry to a service-producing industry. The problem is the manufacturing jobs are the high-paying jobs. The jobs where we're growing are low-paying. They're entry-level, and this is a problem for all of our electives to look at around the county. Gross economy, so the green line here is showing the county's average product. We're flatlining. We've been flatlining for a long time. That's good that we're not going into recession, but other areas in the state and the nation are going really gangbusters, and we're not. That's just a reflection of all of these issues, housing, older population, low-paying jobs. I'll move on to education. This is showing the decline in student enrollment. The blue line is the K through eight, and green is K through, or is the high schools. I talked earlier about aging of Ventura County. Well, this puts it into graphic detail. What we're seeing is less families, having less children. And so the decline is gonna start hitting the schools. I know that the Ojai School District is actually declining. The top line there is from 2009, about 10 years ago, and the green on the bottom is 2017, 18. And you could see that decline in the number of students here in Ojai Valley or Ojai Unified School District. So definitely an issue. We need more babies. Land use and housing, it's very expensive to live here in Ventura County. This shows it by city. The real number up here is the $2,089 is the average rental rate for a two-bedroom apartment in Ventura County. I think all of us old timers remember that when that was our mortgage payment. Now, that is the apartment rate. This breaks it down by city. You can see the various cities. Santa Paula, Fillmore happen to be on the low end. Higher end is Thousand Oaks. So what that means is you graduate the university, maybe you get a job working in Thousand Oaks, but you can't afford to live there. So you decide to live in Santa Paula where the rent's cheaper, you spend more time on the road, you're away from your families. All of these things are interconnected.
Could I just ask? So Ojai is actually, according to this, more affordable in terms of average monthly rent than Simi Valley, Camaria, Moore Park, and Thousand Oaks?
Yes, or two-bedroom apartment.
Okay, I was just curious about...
But that says the Ojai Valley. Is that obviously a wider...
Yes, it's not...
That's not Ojai City. I said Ojai Valley.
Yeah, it does say that.
Okay. I was just a little surprised at how much lower.
Yes.
Myers Oaks.
Probably.
Is that only for apartments or houses?
No, apartments only in that example. Two-bedroom apartment. Yeah, two-bedroom apartment.
Are there two-bedroom in Myers Oaks?
Okay.
Natural and environmental sources. Ventura County is a wonderful place to live. I think that's why we're all here. The Ojai Valley is spectacular. We have the beaches, the mountains. Our ocean water quality is good here in the area. Air quality is good. I like to show this one about solar capacity. So the blue is the amount of previous solar capacity, but the overall bar chart shows you the growth in solar capacity in Ventura County. And we are now at a point that just people from their homes and businesses with solar is equal to about a third to a half of the Edison Energy or Generating Station out there in Oxnard. We've replaced that much capacity with solar here in Ventura County. So I'm sure for those people who don't like energy plants, that's great news.
We're gonna be doing more.
Public health, just, there's a lot of interesting data when you have the chance to read this, and you don't have to read start to finish. You could jump around. The data was researched by California Lutheran University, Dr. Jamshid Demouy. It was written by Tony B. Assadi. We have all of the sources in the back, so if you're interested in any of this data, we give you the websites where you can drill down. This chart is showing teen substance abuse for the major unified school districts. The data comes from a survey given to high school juniors every year. And we actually include the actual survey question here so you can see what the kids were responding to.
I love the questions.
Yeah. And there are a lot more. You can visit this website. There's amazing amount of information. But you can see Ojai there in the middle, pretty high on the number of kids talking about being drunk or high seven or more times. I think we're looking at over 20% for Ojai. Ventura Unified is up there, but it is something of an issue here in Ojai.
Yeah. I was being... I wasn't meaning... I mean, when I said, I liked the questions, I meant they're disturbing.
Yes, it's...
They're revealing, and that's good.
Yeah, I think we take, we assume kids are just playing Instagram when they're actually doing a lot more. This one shows teen mental health. On the top, it's showing the number of kids with chronic sadness, and on the bottom, the actual number of contemplated suicide within the last 12 months. So pretty much across the board. We are seeing declines. That is positive in many of the districts. But you can see that even in Ojai, we are having a problem with some mental health issues. Certainly not your purview, but for the audience and others, I'd like to share that. I know I'm running out of time, Mr. Vega. I'll try to finish this up. Opioid deaths, major problem in Ventura County, 85 people in 2017. This contrasts it with other counties. In the area of public safety, Ventura County continues to be one of the safest counties in the state. This is a chart of the top 15 largest counties in the state. Ventura County is the second lowest crime rate across the board. So that's great news, and it's been that way for a long time. This breaks it out by city. Ojai has the distinct honor of being the city with the lowest violent crime rate. The overall crime rate is a little, is third for Ojai. Moore Park is the champ in the overall rate. And Ventura has the highest crime rate. So chief, you could go talk to Mr. Corny about that. Social services, homelessness continues to grow. The green bar there is veterans. We do break it out by city. It's a little hard to see, but Ojai was showing 47 in 2019. I know you are focused, probably laser-focused on this issue, so I won't add much, but it is here where you could see the other cities. Transportation would continue to have a lot of people driving a long distance to get to work. And wildfire, we did include a special thing in the report as far as the Thomas Fire, showing about $1.4 billion of damage from the Thomas Fire. And we contrast that with the Woolsey Fire, $388 million or billion, $1 million worth of damage. Most of Woolsey was in LA County, and that's not reflected in this chart. This is just the Ventura County portion. Woolsey Fire was about $4 billion of total damage. And one that I don't have, but it is in the chart, is the air quality that I think you all want to look at because it shows just how bad the air quality got in the Ojai Valley during the Thomas Fire. You can see the peak and the decline over the days, very severe, the number of people that were facing hazardous air quality during that time. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm at my halfway... No, I'm joking. I'm all done.
No, yeah, we took up some of your time, so I don't want to rush you off. It's really important information to share with the public.
Right. Again, it is available for anyone watching at home at www.civicalliance.org. We're grateful to all the sponsors, and we're sharing this all around the county. And happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Our economist, Bill.
Quick question on the construction, some construction recovery. If you take out the fire-related permits that are finally starting to flow and the construction purely related because of the construction rebuilding from the fire, do you have any sense of how big a factor that is in the construction recovery? I mean, that, it might be overstating the actual underlying structural increase.
So the data in the report is 2017, showing the number of building permits.
Yeah.
And we did have a nice growth. It went up to 2,565 building permits in 2017, which was 900 increase over the year before. As you all know, building permits don't mean actual construction. It's just the permit was pulled.
Right. They get the permit first.
But it's positive news, but if you think of Ventura County, it's about 800,000 people and maybe growth rate of 3%. That would be about 20, or 10,000, a little more, 20,000 people. And if you're putting three people in a home, you need like six, 7,000 homes for them to live in. So we're not really doing much on the backlog. We're still...
That's what I think, if we're not against that, just the replacement that we're building because of the fire.
Exactly. Yeah, and natural birth. But yes, I don't think the city of Ventura's new replacements are included in that because it was too late in 2017 for the fire. They'll be in the later numbers. Great question.
Just browsing through this, it's fabulous.
Thank you.
It just gives such a great overview. And you, I would like to have, did you say you're leaving some extra copies? Because I know people that...
Mr. Vega has some for the team right back there, and I left some for the audience. It doesn't look like they're gone, so maybe I'll take them with me, but...
So what...
Now's your chance.
What this is, it's an overview of the facts, but how we interpret those facts is not part of this. And, you know, and we can look, if you look at this as far as the economy goes, we're going through such change, it's like we need a whole new paradigm for the economy.
You're exactly right.
In the era that we're living in, with climate change and everything else. But thank you. This is fabulous.
The mission of the Alliance is really to provide unbiased information so policymakers like you and others can be informed and the audience as well, in the community, to be better informed. But we don't take specific positions like build more housing or build less or more roads. That's for you. You're the ones getting paid to pick money.
No, I really appreciate having this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for David? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, for a lifetime of work.
Yeah.
You amaze me. Okay. Public communications, we're almost to that point. We could start right now, or do you want to go ahead and adopt the consent calendar with the two that we pulled off? We'll forget that we...
I'll make, I'll move that we approve A through I.
Okay, the second?
Second.
I, A through J, excuse me.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any objection to the motion to approve? Okay, so ordered. So we'll go ahead and start our public comment, and I have five cards, but because we're no longer dealing with the Safe Street issue tonight, someone, if anybody has something that can't wait till the meeting in February, you would have an opportunity to speak under public comment. Jeff, I don't know what I pronounce that. Otterbon, Otterbon?
Otterbon.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, Jeff and Joan Kemper's on deck. I saw Joan come in.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Otterbon. Thank you.
Okay.
It's good to be here. I would like to express my gratitude for the meeting that happened on Saturday at Nordoff High School, the committee meeting that allowed all the public to come and have some input into the climate emergency situation. So I was glad to see several of you here, there also, and that is encouraging also. But my goal or idea tonight is mostly to speak about the emergency part of this climate You all were agreed in declaring this an emergency, and so I'd just like to say a few words about what that means to me. An emergency is something that takes our attention and our resources and focuses it directly on the subject being global warming. So when I see the way we work through things as being more or less business as usual, meaning that we take some information, we give it to a committee, they pass it on to another committee, next week they'll look at it and pass it on. I think, for example, in Australia during this fires, the fire department and the people running the state of, in Australia, they didn't pass it on to next week and pass it on to next week. They looked at it and said, today, this is what we have to do. This is an emergency. And I would hope as much as possible, you all can take this as that kind of an emergency so that today, you look at things and say, what can we do today? And if we need to pass something on to somebody else and say, can you look at this? Can we insist that they do it today, tomorrow, then, you know, as soon as possible and not not look at it as something that we can wait for next week or next month? So the last thing is the bicycle situation that we just put off till February. That's just an example. Two weeks down the line, I think it's a great project, but let's keep it all on forefront as much as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff. Joan, are you out there? Joan, are you out there? Come on down. Speaking of someone else who's devoted her adult life to helping.
I have something I want to give you a pass out.
And I've got Brian Akins on deck.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me come to talk to you. I think all of you probably know that I do, or that I have a production company that does plays, stage plays, two or three times a year. We raise all the money to fund the productions, and each, each musical or, or play has a local nonprofit as the ticket beneficiary. We give all the money away. And we've been doing that for about ten years. Our show this spring, this March, is a wonderful, wonderful comedy, prize-winning comedy, Harvey. Now, many of you may have seen Jimmy Stewart do the movie. Harvey is ludicrous, it's so funny. It's about a wonderful, kind man who is very happy. His confident in his dear friend is a six-foot-tall white rabbit. And that rabbit lives with him and his sister, and that, that rabbit goes to the bars with him, goes to play pinnacle at the firehouse. The rabbit is his main friend. And you might gather that that does cause some consternation. The play was opened in Broadway in nineteen forty-four. We were at war then. If you remember, the Japanese War did not end till forty-five. And yet, that play was an instant hit, became the best play of the year, because people needed to laugh. Anyway, I think this, I won't tell you anymore, because I hope every one of you will buy tickets and come to this. It opens March twenty-seventh at Matilah. And you all probably remember, this is Easter, pre-Easter, three weeks before Easter this year. A few years ago, we had with a studio artist, we had the Easter egg thing. They decorated a lot of giant Easter eggs and so on, it was decorating the town. Well, the studio artist has joined this production of Harvey, and this is going to be the Easter of the rabbit, the Easter rabbit, not the Easter egg. There'll be eggs too, of course, for the children to hunt. So, we, I'm here to beg your forbearance with this. We would like to construct ten six-foot-tall white rabbits. They would be dressed with a bowtie, a jacket, pants, and we would like to place them around in various public places in Ojai, about the middle of February through Easter. And these rabbits would be smiling, and they would be, you know, just showing the way. They would be, help the Easter activities as well as a spring show. And, for example, a concert in Libby Bowl, Easter, the egg hunts, the activities with the meals, breakfast, brunches, everything. These rabbits could be this way to the egg hunt in Libby Park, or the concert in Libby Park. The Ojai Valley Inn has a thing, I think there's another Easter egg hunt plan at Soul Park. They could be directing people all over to the sunrise service, in addition to standing around. Your handouts show how we're going to construct these, these rabbits. They're going to be made, they're seventy-two inches tall, thirty-six inches wide where their arms are, or their paws, I guess I should say. I don't see the rabbits, I want to add that. Anyway, so, they, we're going to make them out of recycled plastic, corrugated, corrugated plastic. That's what the real estate people use for real estate signs. It's, it's smooth on the outside, so you can paint it, and you can print on it or pen, but the backside is corrugated, and it is weatherproof. So, these real estate signs and the metals, they, they're impervious to, to water or wind or whatever. So, and we'll brace those with one-by-threes and some, some rebar, so they don't fall over. Six-foot does stand up. So, we would like to, the, the charity that is the recipient of Harvey's ticket income is your neighbor, help of Ojai. And they're very excited. I mean, they want to have a six-foot rabbit in their front driveway, and they also want one at their, their store. So, I know this is a little different, but the chamber, I've run this by the Chamber of Commerce, Jamie Fleming, and he's very excited, because this could help the merchants, it could certainly help the restaurants with dinners and so on, and the tourists. It could be a festive thing instead of eggs, bunnies. So, I'm asking you to smile on this project, and we're not asking for any money, we're just asking for your blessing.
Okay. God bless you.
Thank you, thank you, I needed that.
God bless you. My granddaughters can't wait to see them.
Pardon?
My granddaughters can't wait to see them, I'm sure.
Well, maybe I could give her a preview.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, Joan, just one more thing that you do for our community, and thank you.
Thank you.
Pardon?
One, one more thing that you do for our community, or have done or will do, I just want to say thank you. It's a great idea.
Thank you, Randy, thank you.
Okay, no action can be taken tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I'm sure the city manager will.
Got in our direction.
Yeah. Well, I've sort of, I've sort of whispered this around, shall we say?
Right, yeah, okay. And forbearance doesn't have any, there's no evidence of it, so.
So, so.
Sorry, I think we forbear.
Thank you.
So, would you, what would you like me to do? Do you want me to tell you as we get closer to the time?
If we can be in contact.
James, I'll be in touch with you.
They can just make sure that they're all appropriately placed and everything.
Detailed thing to you, and to you too, sir, of course.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Joan. Okay, Brian, you're up, and Ron McCray, you're on deck.
Thank you. I'm here with my museum hat. You're going to see me another couple times tonight with that other hat. So, the museum just finished the Christian Murdy and Ojai exhibit. I hope you had an opportunity to see that at the exhibit opening. I think we had somewhere in the neighborhood of two-hundred-and-eighty people that showed up, not all on the same hall at the same time, in case the fire chief is watching. So, that has been taken down, we're in the process of putting up our new exhibit, which is called Twenty-Two Miles. We have a fabulous landscape exhibition that we can't wait to share with you, curated by Jennifer Moses of Miners Oaks and Gail Pittick of Santa Paula. The reason I say that is Twenty-Two Miles is the distance between Jennifer's house in Miners Oaks and Gail's house in Santa Paula. The title, they asked their favorite Southern California artists to paint scenes from around the Ojai Valley, in both small and large sizes, so look for the larger painting of the artist, as well as a smaller painting of the artist. The results are stunning. The location of the artist, quite, quite a breadth of artists, the twenty-one artists in the exhibit, exhibition are from Carpinteria, Cayucos, Los Angeles, Malibu, Ojai, Pasadena, San Juan, Capistrano, Santa Barbara, Santa Paula, Saticoy, Sherman Oaks, and Templeton. The opening exhibition will be this coming Saturday from five-thirty to seven-thirty. We encourage you to bring a friend, it's open, we usually have delicacies. However, with two-hundred-and-eighty people showing up the last time, if you want some food, I'd get there early. So, thank you all very much.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Ron, you're up, and Diana Blanchard, you are on deck.
Could I pass out some of these documents for you to look at? Any chance? It's going to fall. My name's Ron McCray, I live in South Ventura Street, down the block here, and I have a serious problem with the pickleball court you've got out here. I think there's a problem with the noise ordinance on that. They go on, you know, every day.
Talking to the mic. Hold the mic, Sam.
Okay, I wanted to do this anyway, I wanted you to hear this anyways. This is right outside your door. It goes on six days a week, all day long. I don't know if you've noticed that or not, but this is outside your door across the street. This is from my house, down the street. It's right here, every day when they play. I didn't know what this noise was until all of a sudden I walked over there and no one told me there was going to be a pickleball court over there. I hear that in my house. When I close the door and all the windows, I can still hear, it's like a ping-pong game going in my living room. I can't, it's a serious problem for me, and none of the neighbors over here have been told that that was going to happen. And I think you should review that, maybe give them some, an option to put in their input. What I have here, I think they're in a violation of the sound, the noise elements. This is a Ojai general plan, November nineteen ninety-one. I just, the underlying purpose of the notice, noise element is to eliminate community exposure to excess noise levels. That's what that says, it's on your thing there. This is your document about noise levels. This is excessive noise levels that you can not go over in, put in your paper here. Fifty-five point decibels. This is a meter, I walked around there, they're way over fifty-five, way over. And if you've got some time, just go out there, anytime, okay, the, the pickle people have playtimes over there, and they go over there from eight AM till noon, and then three PM till dusk, which is daylight, seven times, it'll probably be seven or eight o'clock at night, and Saturday, and they never stop. That noise, I think, it just, there's no, no, it's, it doesn't stop. This is a document that I sent in two weeks ago to complain about the noise. I haven't heard anything back from anybody, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to do. The people, the people that are playing this could actually have several other places they can play. One more thing I wanted to show you here, is this is a transfer disclosure statement. I've been a real estate broker here, and I've lived in this town right across the street there for thirty years. I'm a real estate broker, and this is a transfer disclosure statement here that gives out, everybody sells a house, you have to give this transfer disclosure to somebody, and it says right here in number eleven, neighborhood noise problems or other nuisances, you've got to give that to them. And if that is a noise problem or a nuisance, it's going to affect the price of property right around here. That's for darn sure. So, I, I would really like you to reconsider this, maybe contact these people, the owners, the tenants, and let them, you know, if, even the pickle people, if you tell them, that listen, you're bothering people around here. I think some of them might not, if they knew that, they probably wouldn't, they'd go someplace else, there's plenty of other places to go. But, I got a red light here, and I'm, that's all I can say, if you just look at that document there, and let me know what, if you could do anything about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. And the city manager has a copy of it.
And I know we can't deliberate, but we can bring this up, but either future agenda items, our city manager report, and discuss other specifics about this. Okay.
Okay.
So, Ron, I'll, I'll make sure we do that, but we have to wait till the end of the meeting, according to the rules of our meeting.
Thank you.
Diana Blanchard? Is there a Diana out there? If not, okay, that is the end of the public comment cards that I have. Have we missed anybody? Okay. Let us go to, what is it, K, is that the one, yeah, K and L? Okay, on the consent agenda, so K is the second reading of accessory dwelling units. Bill, you were the.
I just have a little housekeeping issue, and that is that there is a deletion of the deed restriction language, I believe on page ten, attachment A, page ten, of fourteen, which I completely agree with, and it's also noted in the staff report, remove the deed restriction requirement for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. My concern is that we make sure that we be fair. In other words, this is going forward, no deed restriction after the effective date of this ordinance adoption, but that still leaves in place the deed restrictions that have been filed to date. And just from a standpoint of fair treatment, I would think that, at least my, I believe in, certainly intent as a councilperson, is to have it apply to all.
And Mayor, I would second that, I was going to, I was going to talk, to speak to the same thing, Bill. I agree with you.
If there's a way to do that.
I think there is, I think we'd have to bring an item back to do that, separate from this.
I think that could be done as direction here, as direction as part of implementation of the state's new mandates regarding ADUs, which do include in government code section six-five-eight-five-eight, six-five-eight-five-two dot two, sub G, the power to go beyond, you could direct its staff, record the necessary documents to lift all past ADU deed restrictions. That would be within your power as a policy choice.
I'm a so-move, as part of my approval, motion to approve this.
Matt, that would require the individual property owners to record new deeds, though, before it was going to, before it went into effect on their personal property?
Well, because right now, the deed restrictions are recorded as covenants between the city and the individual owners, for each of the ADUs. We could record a document on each title lifting that.
Oh, okay.
And we'll figure out the mechanics exactly, but.
If that's cost-effective, yeah, that would be, that's my motion.
Yeah, other comments?
I'll second it, if there's no second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Are, are you comfortable with that as a city attorney, as far as it?
Yeah, I think it's within your power to do it, the policy choice is in your, your realm, and in terms of the mechanics, I think we would lift, record the right document on each title that has one from our records, lifting it, so they wouldn't be bound by the owner occupation requirements going forward.
And city manager, you're, you're good with it? Okay. Any objection to the motion? If not, so ordered. Okay, let's go to number L, number L, letter L. Randy?
So, first of all, I've talked to a number of gardeners in the community, and they are, they're all willing to move forward on this, on this two-cycle ban. You know, they saw it coming. You know, they're all concerned about the expenditures, but I, I've talked to them about, there's a multitude of ways of doing this, you've got four months, you don't have to go out and buy twenty-five or thirty-five-hundred dollars' worth of equipment at one time, you can phase through it. So, some of the current concerns that came back to me were, the biggest one is, I've got this investment in all this battery equipment, and most of the problems are not with the batteries, they're with the mechanical parts of it, like a trigger, or a handle, or something that helps it move, propels it. And so, their concern was, is how do we, you know, what do we do if that breaks? Because if I'm going to invest seven-hundred dollars in a mower, I'm not going to buy two of them, I'm going to buy one of them and hope, you know, and hope it lasts long. So, one of the suggestions was that, in the licensing, registration, or permitting aspect, that if a piece of equipment goes down, that they actually can come back to the city council, or come back to the city service yard, or to the city manager, however we choose to set that up, and actually get a, get out-of-free, get-out-of-jail-free card for a certain period of time. They come in and say, we've sent this piece of equipment back for repair, we need to operate with the two-cycle mower until that piece of equipment comes back. So, I'd like to figure out how we can do that. We can't necessarily make the manufacturers or the vendors that are selling this carry spare mowers, blowers, trimmers. I think it would, I, I think that'd be an undue burden on that. But, I think if we can figure out how they can come back in through the registration process, and notify staff and get a card or something, so if code enforcement comes by and wants to cite them, they can say, no, I have a piece of equipment that's been turned in for repair, it's, you know, it's supposed to be out in six weeks, and then come back. So, if you guys want to help me do that, I'd like to figure out how to put that in here, as well as put back in the permitting and registration at this time, so that we have a way to manage this problem.
Are we, we're discussing this now? Because I don't know that I'm in favor of that. Some of these things can, can be handled, if you're talking about a leaf blower for a driveway, can be handled with a broom. And the public can be educated not to demand such unrealistic cleanliness for their yard, you know, and the, so that the burden is not on the gardener. And I need to understand, like, what kind of, like, if, if equipment is broken, how long does it take to fix it? Is it, are you talking about two weeks, a month? And, and I mean, it's, we're not talking about some, some emergency equip, it's not an emergency equipment that we're talking about, and I think it would, it could get confusing, because the public won't know, are these people operating a gas-powered leaf blower because the electric one broke? I can, I'm not so, I'm not comfortable with the suggestion without understanding it better.
Okay, what's on the agenda right now, is to adopt it, is it submitted? And I think what Randy is suggesting, that it'd be amended, is that what you're?
Right.
Yeah, and so.
So, I could, I could help, Councilman Fresina, just, it just comes down to a, to a cost factor, that we're asking these community members to put forth a lot of expense. And what we're saying is, we appreciate that, we value that, we recognize it, and we're willing to work with you. Now, first of all, most of this equipment does not perform at, at the high mechanical speeds of power mowers. So, while I agree with you, it'd be great not to mow your lawn every week, sometimes that's a function of what that client wants. If you wait two or three weeks, or four weeks, or eight weeks in between mowings, you're going to put a tremendous amount of stress on that new piece of equipment. So, I'm just saying, there's a reason behind it, and again, these were the concerns. I'm as concerned as you that someone might use it as a means to not use electric equipment or battery-operated equipment. I'm with you on that. That's why it has to be something that they take it to the, to a person, they recognize that it's been turned in for repair, and that we allow that. So, I'm.
Well, can we, can we continue? Pardon me, we could go all night on it.
Right, we can.
We have a request. Is it all right to continue this matter for two weeks and come back with either the, both the obstacles as well as the potential solution?
I'm willing to make a motion now, if you'd prefer.
But, but I still haven't had my question answered, which is, how long does it take to repair?
But, we aren't going to know that tonight. That would be what we would.
And the reality is, it's going to be different every time, Susan. There's no constant, what I, what I would, I will proffer a motion, so we don't have to continue another thing to another calendar date. I'd say that I really understand what Mr. Haney was saying, and I think that's only fair, especially for making people register and they're going to put this effort in. I would say that if someone comes to City Hall with documentation supporting that they have equipment that has broken down and is in for repairs, that they be given a two-week allowance to have that back. If they, if they cannot get it repaired in those two weeks, we'll make them have to come back to City Hall and re-register with that same information. That forces them to come back every two weeks. If it's eight weeks, that's going to force them to come back every two, and then in order to get that equipment back into compliance, they will have to show that they are no longer using the other equipment, and that they are using the new equipment.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, Bill?
To, in terms of commenting on the motion, to, I am concerned about staff time, from a code enforcement standpoint.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say, yeah. It's a lot of administration.
And I'm also, I'd like to ask the question, Mr. Haney, to what extent do you think the rental market's going to step up and have more electric equipment available for rent, for both people that only use occasionally, and for this kind of situation where people need to have short-term replacement?
Well, Greg Rents is the only rental yard in the valley, so we have one rental agency, and, and if you've been to his shop, I, I don't have a sense that he's going to invest in, be investing. and if you've been to his shop, I don't have a sense that he's gonna investing, be investing in a lot of this equipment. I've talked to Eileen Alquaflo, that is selling Husqvarna, and she had the same concern as, I don't know if Husq, I asked her to reach out to Husqvarna. I don't know if Husqvarna's gonna give her spare mowers, blowers, edgers, you know, that's something that they're gonna have to agree to. And if it, and if they can, then if you own a Husqvarna, you'll go there and get a, get it exchanged while something's being broken. You'll have to take it back to a dealership anyway for repair. And that's the, that's the other thing. This is all new equipment. This is all something new that we're doing moving forward. And some of this equipment's available at Home Depot, some's at Lowe's, some's at Ventura Rental, or I'm drawing a blank on their name right now. But the interesting, the interesting thing is, guys, we're trying something new. And, and if we're not willing to work with these people to figure out how to best do it, then what we're gonna do is just create more chaos. And I, that's why, I'll take this back two weeks.
Randy, I wanna say, we're gonna create more people that aren't gonna comply with our rules if we don't make them enough flexibility to have it put in place. And we are moving quickly. And this is a very aggressive thing that we're doing. We're the one community that's adopted, some of these rules are some of the only ones. We're the only cities that have adopted all these. I, I just can't imagine it's gonna be so significant that it's gonna deal with staff so significantly to really bog them down. But here's the deal. I'd rather sacrifice our staff time for the betterment of this climate emergency that we're talking about, than sacrifice not having some ability to get people compliant with this, where they're frankly, if their equipment breaks down, versus them coming in and having two weeks to do it, they're just gonna use the other equipment and hope they don't get caught.
Well, the other point I wanna make on this is that, would it be better to have this handled by a resolution regarding rules, rather than trying to amend the ordinance for rules like this? In other words, is this, is this the kind of thing, it has to be codified, or is it something that ought to be referenced and simply regulations?
Either is options. I understood Mayor Portemblatz's motion to be not something to add to the ordinance, but rather a direction on administration and implementation to the city manager. You could certainly codify that if you wish, or you could create...
I would, I would be happy with it being a policy versus a code.
I'm happy with policy, too.
Yeah.
I will say, last meeting, it was approved with the, I believe there was a request to come back with, within those 90 days with some regulations and programs in place, so we can still come back with those, with those, with a policy.
And I just wanna point out that a lot of these tools can be replaced with non-electric or non-gas. And we're not promoting big lawns in the city. We're trying to get people to let their lawns go and do something else.
So, when it comes back, you know, we'll, we'll debate the merits of the ordinance or the resolution. Right now, this is just a modification, trying to figure out how to phase it in, until we get some kind of idea of what the reliability of equipment is. I don't know that we've had a big problem with our equipment, but we've actually gotten a little more aggressive and expanded what we're doing. So, okay, is there...
One last question, one last comment, Mayor. So, I did, I did study this. I looked at six manufacturers of this equipment. And I'm gonna provide that information to you, James, so that we can post it. You know, six different values on mowers in general, starting from $300, going all the way up to $800. Backpack blowers, the same thing, starting at $399, going all the way up to $1,800. So, there's a big flex, there's a big area of, of costs here. And so, again, I'd just like to, just to be clear on that, James, I'll give you that information, and we just wanna be able to work with these people. That's what we wanna do, to make this, to make this work out well.
Do we have clarity on what your motion is now, Ryan?
Yeah, it's dead in the water, I think.
No.
No, are we voting, or are we gonna bring it back?
Well, it's a motion to approve with regulations to adopt.
Yeah, that's, yes. And I, when you bring back the regulations, we'll include them. Okay, I'm good.
But are we approving then?
Okay, James, are you clear?
Yes.
Okay, it'll be back in two weeks.
And I'll make one last point. The more flexibility we show, the also means the more rigid we will be with anyone out there who breaks these rules. You're going to get reported, we're gonna continue to find you. We're trying to change this significantly. Don't think about this as us being weak. Think about this as being flexible, so we can enforce even more.
But I just wanna make sure I am clear. So, it's not being continued for two weeks?
No, we're approving it.
We're approving it now with the regulations coming back within the...
Regulations coming back.
Okay, so what, then, I gotta be sure I've given Sousa the right idea. When the regulations come back for how it will be enforced, that will be debatable. Is that right?
Right. And I was aiming for February 25th with votes.
So, it's adopted tonight.
So, it's adopted tonight.
Well, if we...
If we have a majority vote.
Yeah. Okay, so are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
So, we're not, we, there's no, right now, we're not saying that if your electric mower blows, breaks, that you can use a gas-powered.
No, that'll be part of the regulations that come back in, at a future meeting.
That we will debate.
Today, we're just...
You've got more weeks to prepare.
I'm gonna prepare.
We're approving the ordinance to go forward.
Okay, are we ready for, are we ready for a vote?
Because the customer needs to bear some of the burden.
Sousa, are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's have the vote then.
Mayor Portemblatz?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, we are now on item number two, public hearing, recommendations of the council to designate the Ojai Playhouse Theater as the city historic landmark number 26. Is there any staff introduction, or is that...
Yeah, just a brief introduction.
Okay.
So, this item is a, as you mentioned, a public hearing to discuss landmarking the Playhouse Theater. There is a thorough and substantial report from Provenience Group included with the agenda. And it notes that the theater is the oldest operating theater in Ventura County. And it has a lot of interesting information, like an advertisement for a 1914 showing of a movie called The Valley of the Moon, which showed that tickets for adults were 20 cents, and tickets for children were 10 cents. So, there's a lot of good information in there.
It's highway robbery.
And so, the HPC, and I believe HPC chair is likely here, if, you know, if, if questions are asked. But HPC considered the matter at their July 11th meeting, and then their January 9th, 2020 meeting, took public testimony, heard evidence, received the report, and found that the, recommended that the Playhouse Theater be landmarked as city landmark number 26. The report has a lot of information, including it notes that the theater is currently for sale, and noted that there was a stipulation at the time it was prepared to keep the business as a movie theater. So, there were no issues with landmarking at that point. The report also notes that it's eligible for designation, not only as the, as a city of Ojai landmark, but in the California registry and National Registry. So, with that, the HPC recommended that council approve it as landmark number 26 for the city of Ojai.
And also a waiver, they recommended.
Right, and the...
The waiver, yeah.
The waiver of application fees was also recommended for, for work that would go along with that.
Yes.
Okay, ready to, for the hearing to be opened?
Yes.
Okay, we'll open the, the public hearing, and I have two cards. Brian Akins, you warned us, didn't you?
I did.
You'd be back.
One more after this. So, again...
Tanya, you're on deck.
So, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, I wanna thank Councilman Wyrick and Councilwoman Francina, who wore attendance at our Historic Preservation Commission meeting. It was nice to have you there, to hear what we were talking about that night. We did discuss this. We have, I, as a means of declaration, I also was in a meeting with Joe Niss as part of the city, and meeting with Tanya and Tobias back in mid-October, as we were trying to get information on what this means, and to each of the parties involved. And so, that was a good meeting, and I think it took us forward. The gist of the meeting was that the, the theater is kind of in a unique position, because it not only has the historic nature to it, but it also has, in part, a financial benefit to the city as being an operating museum. So, we, those are the one things, I'm a financial guy, take those things in mind. But also, because it's so important, because it's so central to the location, because, again, of the history that's approaching with this, and keeping in mind that processes are taking place between, with the family regarding this property, the Historic Preservation Commission unanimously approved the wish that the fees would be waived. Again, this is a beneficial, multi-beneficial property. We would love to see it. You heard it was the oldest. Right behind my back is Craig Walker, who is the history guy, in case anything comes up on that. But, and then also, it was important that we, we as a Historic Preservation Commission committed to this, but also that the council worked together with the owners in the process in going forward as a part of this designation. So, we see it as a wonderful partnership between us as the Historic Preservation Commission, yourselves as the representatives of the city, and Tanya and Tobias, who are here representing the owners of the property. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Tanya?
Good evening. I am Tanya Parker. I am Claude Alawar's daughter and Willy Alawar's niece, who are the owners of the property. So, I am here representing our family today. We would like to first state that the Alawar family has every intention of keeping the Ojai Playhouse a working movie theater. Due to sensitive negotiations, we're unable to say what our plans with the businesses inside the building are at this time. But we wholeheartedly agree with the commission's purpose in maintaining the look and feel of downtown Ojai, and maintaining the historical facades and buildings that are here. We feel it's an important part of the town's charm and character and its cultural heritage. As the owners and operators of the theater for the last 37 years, we are in full support of the commission's plan to designate the outside of the theater building as a historic landmark. As stewards of this building for nearly four decades, our family has been committed to maintaining its significance, both in the look of the building, but also as one of the appealing features of downtown Ojai, along with the post office, the Oaks, and the arcade, and also providing a movie theater to our community. The family did not seek this designation, rather, the city brought it to us. And at the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, we did ask for a delay on the designation of the front facade. And as we are now currently and actively moving, moving forward with reconstruction, we do not wish to have any encoverances on this building due to landmark status during this process. With our limited funds and resources, we do, we do not want to incur any potential additional expenses or delays going through the historical commission's approval process. And so, we do accept the commission's recommendation to the council to move forward with the designation, with the recommendation to waive permitting fees associated with the landmark status. Though it may not appear so outwardly, we have been working diligently for the last four years to come up with a plan that would give Ojai its movie theater back. I think we can all agree that Ojai needs a theater. The current state of movie theater viewing in our society has changed significantly since the water main break and the flood of the Ojai Playhouse. The primary reason for these present delays in construction is that we've been doing extensive research and getting much-needed consultation from professionals in the industry as to the best ways to rebuild a movie theater that people will still want to come to on a regular basis. We can all agree that everyone wants to see this building open for business again as soon as possible, and we are finally in a position to move forward in restarting the construction within the permits that we've obtained. So, waiving the fees and the willingness of the Historic Preservation Commission to meet when needed to further, to hasten the permitting process would help us expedite any further permits needed for the minor changes that we have planned. And again, our family is in support of this designation, just as we are fully committed to keeping the movie theater, uh, keeping the business a movie theater, and we will continue with our plans to reopen as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the only cards I have, so I guess at this point, we'll close the hearing, and the council will take a deliberation. So, the hearing is closed. Bill?
Well, I just, I'm, I'm very excited, you know? I've, I've been wanting to hear those words for a long time, in terms of, of an effective partnership. And I'm inspired by the possibilities, including becoming, because we haven't been open here, I've been going to the Riviera more in Santa Barbara, and hope something like that, you know, could evolve here. And it would have a lot of secondary, you know, impacts and feedback, positive feedbacks with all the, you know, what we have in terms of Film Society and Playwright Festival, and so on and so forth. So, I'm, I'm really excited, and I just, I'm ready to make a motion, but I don't wanna...
We'll make the motion. That's appropriate.
I'm gonna move that we approve with, with special attention to waiving the fees, that we don't miss anything that's specific. I wanna waive any fees specific to the landmarking status, and make sure any and all are waived.
I'll second.
Okay, we gotta move to say...
Wholeheartedly second.
I just wanna say, I'd be awfully hard pressed to vote no on a report on a historic building that's a picture is in my office of all the people in front on July 4th of 2015, is, this building is not only historical to all of us in Ojai, and I spent many times there, but it's also a focal point of our battle against Golden State Water, and all of how that went. So, I...
Symbolism is...
In fact, it was, it was councilmember Wyrick who called me one day and said, I'm tired of this building being shut down and nothing going on. Find something we can do. And we put our foot down and tried to get as much as we could out of Public Utility Commission. And at least I think we helped a little bit in moving it closer to today. So, one thing that blew my mind was in that case, one thing the judge asked was, or I should say, the administrative law judge said, is this not a historical landmark? And I was just telling Brian about this. Steve McClair, the former city manager, had taken a picture from the hole in the wall from the theater over to see the Portico Tower, the, the post office tower. And I remember in the brief writing, it's not a historic landmark, because it blew me away, it wasn't. It's not a historic, but it's in the shadow of one. So, now I don't have to say that anymore. So, I think, I think this is a long time coming.
Right. And I would have to support the motion, because under oath in the Superior Court, I testified along with...
It was historic.
Of the cultural value. And we had the same issue when the Golden State wanted to challenge why it wasn't a landmark. And I said, that's a good question, but that doesn't mean it's not a landmark, it's just it hasn't been blessed. So, as we've been asked this evening to give blessings, I think this is a good time to do it. Randy?
So, my concern going through this was that the owners wanted it landmarked. And so, I'm hearing that you do. And then, how is this landmarking gonna impact the sale of it to your prospective buyers? Have they all agreed to this landmarking and it not being an impediment?
The theater is not currently for sale at the moment. And with, yes, this designation would affect the value of the building going fortune in the, going forward in the future. However, my family feels that it is important to maintain this historical facade. It's just a landmark on the facade of the building.
Right.
So, that's something we're willing to accept.
And then, the permit fees that we're waiving, what are we waiving?
Dollar amount?
Yeah.
There was discussion, oh, what the values...
Anything specific to the landmarking?
Yeah, we didn't have an estimate yet, but it was specifically, we were talking about some permits related to replacement of the, the windows, which I'm not sure if offhand, we have a...
We...
Okay.
We have some minor changes planned. We want to upgrade the lighting in the sign, the marquee's to LED. And on the restaurant side, upgrade the windows to be operable windows, to bring in some more light and air into that building. So, there are a few minor changes that are planned. The stucco color and everything's gonna remain the same. There's no changes to any of the historical lines of the theater that are in the report.
We're not waiving those fees, and Golden State Water was gonna pay them, right? Okay, good. All right, then, I'm okay.
And Mayor, I had just a couple of questions for Brian. Thank you. And again, this is all an educational process for me. So, you know, I've been here 26 years. I've seen the sound in the theater changed. I've seen speakers set up. I've seen chairs replaced. I've seen a number of things that have taken, you know, that have been remodeled or redone. Are they outlined in here as to what is going to, you know, what, what are the designated features that...
This is only the facade, isn't it?
This is only the facade.
So, typically, when a, someone comes to the Historic Preservation to landmark whatever it is, there are historic features that are called out. Most times, those historic features are solely external. In some cases, there are historic features within the house that people want to be specified as a landmark item. And in those cases, before any changes take place internally, they would have to come to the city and then go before the Historic Preservation.
If it was landmarked.
If it was landmarked, and the internal character-defining features were specified in the historic report.
So, there's no internal...
That is not the case in this.
Right, there's no internal features that are gonna be landmarked on this, on the inside?
No, they're not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, if you look in your packet, exhibit A has the character-defining features, which are all focused on the facade and the architecture.
All right, if there's nothing else, then let's call a vote. We can wait, but we don't need to.
You got a quorum.
Wait till the next item, I get to recuse myself, then we don't know who's in charge.
I'll tell you guys a story.
I'll tell you guys a story while we're waiting.
Well, you're running the meeting now.
I said, "Let's call the vote."
Call the vote.
He needs, he wants to vote on this, but I'll tell, can I tell a little story? I guess it was thirty-seven years ago that your dad came to Ojai, and I think I was the first, he tells me I'm the first Ojai person he met. I was at the home of a mutual friend, and of course, I didn't have a car, and he was going to give me a ride through town. And I don't know if he'd ever even seen the town, but being the spiritual kind of psychic person that he is, as we drove past the theater, he suddenly turned his head and he goes, "I'm going to buy that." And he did, yeah. So, I do remember going there as an elementary school student, and tenth sense, you could go see him nice matinee, quarter, you could really have a great afternoon for a quarter, popcorn, a candy bar, and a ticket to get in.
Oh, I have one more question that does remind me, I remember the attorney that represented you, John Howard, one of the conditions was that he got a new popcorn machine? Is that still happening? Hopefully?
I believe the condition was that he got a, got, we had our dry popcorn back, free popcorn.
We're waiting for you to conduct the vote, Mayor.
Oh, okay.
I couldn't get us to a vote.
Yeah, we want to hear your name on the...
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
And thank you very much.
Done, thank you. Okay. Discussion and review of the watershed adjudication.
And city attorney, I believe I need to recuse myself on this.
Yes, and counsel for other parties in the case, thank you.
I will be back. Okay, I think, Mr. City Attorney, will you kick it off?
Happy to. So, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, and members of the public, this is an item really just to have a brief discussion of the Ventura River watershed adjudication. For those who haven't been paying attention, they've been under rock for a couple of weeks, the city of Ventura has filed suit to initiate a adjudication of all water users in the Ventura River watershed, including both those pulling directly from the river itself and those pulling from or with the right to potentially pull water from the two groundwater basins at issue, the Ojai Valley Groundwater Basin, the Upper Ventura River Groundwater Basin, plus the Upper Ojai Basin, and the last basin, which I believe is the Matilah, there's one more watershed. It's four basins at issue, the Lower Ventura River Basin. So, four groundwater basins, all part of the Ventura River. Ventura's suit derived from a underlying suit that was filed by a group called Channel Keeper, which is an environmentalist nonprofit that has sued Ventura's, challenging that the city of Ventura's diversions from the Ventura River to provide domestic water service were violations of various requirements, particularly the state constitutional requirements for reasonable and beneficial use of water. As part of Ventura's defense to that challenge by Channel Keeper, Ventura has contended that the water usage by others is unreasonable, essentially saying, "If we are unreasonable as a Ventura user, then so too are all others who might use water from this system." There was some challenge to that, it went up to the Court of Appeal, the outcome of that was direction, or a decision rather, by the city of Ventura to convert the case that previously had been a fight between Ventura, Channel Keeper, and certain other large consumptive users of water, to convert that into a fight between Ventura, Channel Keeper, and every possible water user in the Ventura River watershed, hence where we are now. As you'll know, Ventura, or may be aware, Ventura initiated the full-scale adjudication on January 2nd of this year, and has begun serving notice to persons who are overlying landowners, and has begun serving as a, directly initiating litigation against any landowner of riparian land, or any person who is known to operate a water well at this time. The persons, the city is included in two categories there as an institution. City owns riparian land. Riparian means land that is adjacent to a river or a tributary, and which, under California system, has the right to pull water from that river or from that tributary, under some rules and restrictions. And then overlying land is any land in the valley that overlies any of the four groundwater basins at issue, for which a landowner has a right to sink a well, under rules and regulations, and currently there's a moratorium on wells in the city of Ojai.
Okay, Matt, can we...
But perhaps I'm giving too much background, so...
Yeah, right, asking a lawyer, he's giving the good lawyer answer. And I think everyone knows at this point that the city of Ventura, I guess partially in frustration and partially trying to bring finality to the water rights throughout the western part of the county or our watershed, has been directed by the courts to send all of us. I think probably maybe if there are property owners here in the audience, if you haven't gotten one, you'll get one like I didn't, I think just about everybody up here. The city council did meet in closed session to discuss what we might do. We've made some overtures to the city of Ventura to suggest that they take a step back possibly, if there's a way to do that, and use alternative dispute resolution techniques rather than go to trial, which is a very expensive and a lengthy process, and we're trying to figure out what avenues are available to us. The council has, well, we as a community are fortunate, if there's anything fortunate in all this, one is the drought's kind of tempered a little bit, but the other is Richard Hages, who lives here in the town, one of our residents and a highly qualified person, to help us advise the city as well as reach out to the other parties and provide them with maybe some alternatives to what is going on with the litigation. So, the council is interested in doing that. They also, and I don't know if I have the right legal terms, but what is this, a joint?
So, the count, I can speak...
We're exploring the possibility, I'll do it in kind of layman's terms, and then if we need a legal, the idea that, you know, ten thousand property owners all get this stuff separately, most of whom have no, they don't have wells, they're not going to drill a well, it's not their issue, but there are a substantial number of people where it is a concern and it is an issue, and we are concerned about having to, all of us, make that decision about filing the court fees and what that means. So, what the council was exploring, and we've asked the staff to do this, is is there some benefit in some kind of joint defense where everybody has to meet their own responsibilities, but if we collectively do it, is there a better chance of getting a better outcome? And I don't know if that says it clearly enough.
I think the key point to bear in mind there is that the council has directed evaluation of that approach. That doesn't lift the obligation for any person who is a landowner and who received or was served the lawsuit to consider for yourself whether or not to defend the suit, and whether or not to file the form answer and pay the filing fee and participate in the case, or not do so. That choice has to be made individually, but the council has directed evaluation of a possible joint defense approach for the valley or for the city that would be, is under evaluation as a possible solution, and the council has noted is continuing to work with the council members in Ventura to look at and pursue an alternative solution that doesn't involve an adjudication, and we've seen some positive movement, if you were at the Ventura City Council meeting last night, they've directed that they evaluate a forthcoming proposal from Casitas Municipal Water District to look at an alternative to the adjudication. So, there's some proposals afoot, no definitive action yet.
Okay, anything else need to be said? Okay, so, and I'm sure most of you, or at least if you don't know who Richard Hages is, Richard helped manage Casitas for a number of years, and then spent a lot of his career as the head of the Camrosa Water System, and worked and was very instrumental in the Cayega's watershed, bringing all the parties together over these environmental issues to find a physical solution to a problem, that is, to deal with what the environmental impacts were and do it cooperatively. And so, we're hoping that maybe that's out there, and we'll have more news for you probably at our next council meeting, so. Okay, let us...
We didn't have any cards.
Did I have some cards on this?
Item three.
That was item three?
No, okay.
Nothing for item three.
Okay, item number four is the attendance report, city commissions and consideration of changing membership status of individual commissioners. This is the request from council members, what, at the last council meeting? So, how do we want to proceed on this? The, who were the members who wished to have it back?
I can give a very brief staff report.
I mean, I have something.
I have a question.
It is just to kind of reiterate that, at the January 14th meeting, as is typical at the first meeting of each year, we gave the attendance record for the prior year for each commission. Council discussed the reports and asked for information about the motion from February of 2019 that discussed the absence policy. That information is provided in this report, and importantly, it notes that council would consider removal of commissioners if they have four or more absences in a year, and as noted in the prior report, there are some commissioners with those absences, so, and they are listed in the report as well. So, the item is brought back with that information for council discussion of any action.
Okay.
Two questions. On the four or more absences, is the planning commission, which meets twice a month, counted the same as other commissions?
Yeah, so we reviewed that motion from February 12th, 2019, which had, it was a motion and it was approved by council, and it specifically, in fact, focused on the planning commission and noted that once any commissioner has four meeting absences per year, including for special meetings, council will consider removal of the commissioner. So, I had actually recalled too that I thought there was an allowance for planning commission because they meet twice as often, but it actually is not the case.
Okay. And I didn't vote for that anyway, did I?
You were the lone voter.
You were the, yeah, you were the voter.
Okay. And then my other question is, oh, is, we got this, a note, an email from the assistant city manager, Joseph, Joe Fiss, and it says, "For your information, I will be putting together a protocol for reorganizing all the commissions after their appointments in May. Typically, reorganization involves only naming a chair and vice chair and establishing a schedule for the year." So, my question is, could you clarify why that was changed?
So, what we are proposing is, so the term limits, a lot of the, most of the term limits end in May, and so what we've proposed is rather than naming a chair and a vice chair in January, and then having to reorganize in May based on that change, that we do the reorganization in May moving forward. And so, you know, for example, if, you know, the Arts Commission, we wouldn't expect a change in their membership, although, well, yeah, so we wouldn't expect a change in their membership, but if somebody's term ends in May, which they do have a couple of people whose terms are ending in May, they can just, they would be changing their, or appointing their chair and vice chair at that time, rather than appointing in January for four months.
But in the meantime, the chair quit.
And that was why that was a terrible example, but yes, the chair did just unfortunately step, or left the commission, so that was a bad example, but...
But how are we going to address their concerns that they've stated? They sent a letter with the concerns and why that doesn't work for them.
Are we mixing two subjects right now?
Yeah, that's a different subject, but we've, I've been in contact with them, and I believe we have a solution. It's going to be on their next agenda.
Okay.
Bill?
Yeah, I'd like to, I thought about this, and what I'm going to suggest is an approach which doesn't involve naming individuals, but to see if we would be comfortable with a collective policy here, because it's important, this is part of our governance, as how we do things in our city, is to have people participating in the commissions, and it asks a lot of volunteers, but at the same time, it's part of, it's part of what we depend upon. And so, what I'm going to suggest, and I have written out a motion, is that we adopt a motion which states that, all right, anybody who's exceeded three vacancies, three absences, we're going to declare that, whoever it is, not by name, we're going to declare that position vacant. Now, our ordinance states that when a position is, when a term is up, and this would clarify that, that the term is, you know, even though it's declared vacant, the person is free to continue to operate in that position, but that there'll be notice to take applications for replacement of that position, and go through the standard position where the mayor makes nominations, and then it comes to us. So, I've written it, I think it's the fairest way to deal with this, and the person who, whose position is declared vacant is still free to apply again, to be reappointed to the position, they can reapply. And so, I'm going to pass out my motion for consideration.
Okay, so, okay.
And I'll come back to it later if you'd like.
Okay, well, I have a card for public comment, so we'll take the public comment, and then we can continue with the discussion.
Okay.
Brian Aiken. A man trooper is over this word. You did say three times?
I did, three, only three.
Yeah.
So, again, share the Historic Preservation for those that just tuned in. Regarding absences, we did have one commissioner that had three. One of those, we've clarified the, those absences, one was travel, one was for medical conditions, so the other commissioners, all only, our current commissioners, all only had one absence, including myself, who worked eleven hours from Atlanta to get here and missed the meeting by...
Remember that day?
That much. I was at the Y when I got the phone call.
You blamed your wife, I think, for that.
I said, "My dear sweet wife, please, my dear sweet wife." I didn't want all wives in the valley to hate me. So, the other thing I wanted to bring up or just remind the council is that we do have seven commissioners, but we have two vacancies. Lisa Poit moved to Prescott, Arizona, she has been gone for a number of months, and Darwin McCready, who was with us for six, seven years, was our chair for four years. Thank you, Darwin, for your service, has left commissions because of busy, okay?
Because of what?
Being busy.
Oh, being busy.
That's a good thing, yeah.
Good thing, making a living, yes. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Mayor, may I say something? There may be people here who don't know that we postponed the ATP.
Oh, okay.
If you want to announce that again.
Go ahead.
Oh, if anyone just arrived to speak on item eight on the ATP project, it's been postponed till the first meeting in February, and it will be the first item on the agenda. Okay, I did my duty.
Okay, bye. Thank you, Susan, yeah, that's important to do that. Okay, Bill, you had, you passed out a motion.
Yes, so I'll, I just, I think I explained the rationale behind it. It's meant to try to come up with a, you know, very fair, well-stated, and it doesn't take people off a commission, it just declares the position, it basically just tries to treat everybody the same according to our protocol, and so I'll make the motion and see if I have a second. I passed it out.
Okay, we've got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
When, are you, by this theory, a person that has been absent three times?
More than three.
More than three.
Yeah, more than three, not three, more than three.
More than three.
Four or more would be better.
Four, four or more.
So, you're saying now four or more?
No, it's more than three, so it's the same as four is more, four or more.
Okay, I have a different brain, okay.
But don't we currently have a, for consideration of this is more than four, so...
It's actually more than three, I believe. It's four or more.
It was four or more before.
It's four or more.
Four or more.
Okay, that's different, four or more.
The current standard is...
More than three.
It was further moved that any commissioner that has four meeting absences per year, including special meetings, that the council will point, at that point, will consider removal from the commission was the motion.
Which is the same as more than three.
Or the same as four or more, but how long are we going to do this?
Okay, okay. Let's move past that.
I just want to know who's on first.
Yeah, right, yeah, no, no, what's on first?
But you're saying shall be declared vacated, but notice to be issued, but that person doesn't have to leave?
No, they would continue to serve.
They would continue to serve.
Be free to make application to be reappointed, but we'd also take applications for other people that might be interested in that position.
But this makes a good point, when it says declared vacated, it sounds like that it's now empty as opposed to, the term is, their appointment is deemed expired, is that what we're saying?
I was going to say, it's, vacated would mean they're not on the commission, they don't have the power to vote, they don't count for quorum. If the goal is to put them in a probation status, effectively, that's not the right word, but...
I don't like that either.
But if the, I guess my question is, do you want them to count or not while the council's debating whether to give them a pass or... council's debating whether, whether to give them a pass or not?
I think, I think they would become acting commissioners pending approval.
But there's no, the code doesn't contemplate acting commissioners.
Right, well, the, the code does state that if your term is up, that you can continue to serve until the position is replaced, or you are named to another term.
With the exception of the planning commission, which is different language for its terms.
Okay. Do you have some suggestion to try to, you know, you understand my intent?
I think the goal would be, for any position, any commissioner who hits more than three, so...
Or four.
Or four.
Or more.
For any commissioner who hits the trigger as selected by council, that person shall be subject to replacement by the council. The clerk is directed to issue, to issue notice of the opportunity for replacement, and the council then would, upon such time as the mayor or the relevant council member for the planning commission, recall, that's now by districts, makes it, makes a recommendation, the council will consider replacing that person with either themselves or someone else.
Right.
So, it wouldn't be vacant. If I, if your goal is to let them continue to serve...
That's true. I'm, I'm poor language.
Then they would, they would be put in this eligible for replacement status.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
If, if, whether, I, I don't know whether I'm, now I'm bored for this motion yet, but is this, would this go into effect for the current commissioners that we're reviewing, or would this be in the future?
That's my intent.
So, this, so this would, your intent is that it would directly impact the four individuals listed in here that have four?
Yeah, that, that's my intent, is that we, there would be a, a round of notices of applications. They'd be...
Or I should say five.
Declared eligible for replacement, instead of vacated, and they would be free to apply to, for another term.
Okay, I have a question.
As well as others that might be interested.
My question is, you're saying there's not going to be any exceptions to this rule? So, someone is, is, has a husband or, or wife that's in the process of dying, and they need to do hospice, end-of-life care. There's no exception to your policy?
My policy is trying to not get personal.
Well, I, I...
And then, and the, the exceptions is in the application process, where the, the, mayor has the nomination power, and we have approval power, and I am specifically not trying to get into debating individuals here.
Well...
Being fair, nevertheless.
I, I just see it completely different. My feeling is that if there's a problem, the chair can bring up the problem with absences. If there's not a problem, if someone misses, and there's no problem, why go through this process?
Because we have a protocol.
Well, I, I didn't vote for that protocol, so I object to this.
That's why there's five of us.
Yeah.
Well, it seems to me we're, I understand where you're going, Bill. It's, you don't want to make these things publicly personal.
Right.
On the other hand, I drove a monorail at one time at Disneyland. Not one time.
I didn't know that.
That was my job. I was a monorail driver.
Oh, my goodness.
And when they trained you, they explained, they have what they call a dead man's switch, in which meant if you suddenly had a heart attack, you know, you went limp, the switch automatically put the brakes on. It seems like we're sort of coming up with a variation on a dead man's switch, rather than a conscious decision that we make. And it seems to me that, you know, I would be happy to meet with Councilman Wyrick and see if we could figure out a, a strategy for this, rather than trying to do it in a council meeting that is respectful of people's privacy, and recognizes the reality. These are uncompensated positions, and we don't have people knocking down the doors to get in. And it seems to me that there are some other alternatives. They're, they are a little bit uncomfortable, but I think we probably could come up with one. I think this is, I appreciate the, the effort to figure out, how do we get this changed? Because right now, what happens? We've got some people with four, some with eight. There's a big difference between four and eight. But the real question is, is why, and what is the impact of not being in attendance? Is it actually affecting the business of the community? So, Bill, are you willing to, to?
Yes.
Let's carry this forward a couple of weeks, and keeps a little pressure on us and you, and I'll sit down and see if we can figure out something that maybe, I'm not sure we can, but we can try.
That's right.
I, I have one more comment, since you two are going to go off and discuss this. This is not an elected position. When people don't want to serve, they just quit without even giving notice. They're not beholden to the public. You know, some of them give notice if they can, but if they don't, I mean, I think the, the human thing to do is ask, "Why are you absent? Do you want to, do you want this position?" It's such a simple way to resolve it, instead of all these, these...
Okay, that would be...
I hope you consider that. Just ask them.
I also, I also think, Mayor, that, that when you put an application in to sit on a commission, along with it comes the responsibility of being there. And there's a number of times that we've attended commission meetings when they don't even have enough people for a quorum. We've had a meeting here, where three, a special meeting, where I think it was the whole planning commission, one person showed up.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it's...
Ten, more than once, that's, that's true.
So, that told me that night that they didn't care about attending that meeting. That's what they demonstrate to me. And it'd be no different if there was anyone up here on the dais that decided not to show up three or four or five times, no matter what the degree of difficulty is. You still have to accept responsibility for your action.
I agree with that.
And you have to accept responsibility for being a member of a commission in this community. So, the willy-nilly effect, to me, doesn't make sense. You know, you either have a rule, or you don't.
Okay, well, we can debate it when we bring it back, if you're good with us continuing it two weeks, and Bill and I will see if we can figure out anything different from this. And if not, we'll get, be prepared to deal with this motion next time.
I just hope you put illness, family emergency, or something like that, in your suggestion.
Okay.
With, with verification.
Okay, without objection, we will, we'll so do, and with Bill's consent, okay?
Yes, no problem. I withdraw my motion for now.
Okay, great. Number five is the Chapter Nine of the Ventura County Fire Protection District Ordinance Number Thirty-One. James?
Thank you. And this item is, before the council, as part of the code adoption process, the Ventura County Fire Protection District, every building code cycle will adopt their amendments to Chapter Nine, and their amendments are those that are higher than the state mandated requirements. We recently had the updated code, code cycle. We adopted our own fire...
We went above.
Yep, fire specific amendments.
On, on our own way.
And then we received the request, which we typically do, from the Fire Protection District with, to adopt the amendments that they've adopted. And, you know, it was in the attachment, I don't, we didn't explain it necessarily in the report, and I apologize, but it's the issue of adopting the fire sprinkler requirements. And if you can recall, we've, we've discussed it previously, and ultimately decided not to adopt it as part of our, you know, risk benefit analysis. But it's the requirement that for residential construction, when you're at, when somebody is adding an addition to an existing structure, if the addition is greater than 1,000 square feet and greater than 50% of the existing structure, that the, both structures must include sprinklers. So, that means that a 3,000-square-foot house, you can add a 1,400-square-foot addition, and that wouldn't require sprinklers. But once you went above, to 1,500 square feet, which is 50% and greater than 1,000 square feet, or above, that it would trigger the requirement for sprinklers. And for commercial construction, it's a little different. It's a requirement that adding 25% of the floor area would trigger the requirement. So, if somebody has a 4,000-square-foot property, they can add 900 square feet and not add sprinklers. But if they added 1,000 square feet, they would have to add sprinklers. So, as mentioned, the, this has been requested over the last couple cycles. We've adopted our own amendments that focus on fire protection, but we were requested to consider it again, so the item is on the agenda.
Requested by the fire, for, by the fire marshal.
District. So, I have one card, unless there are other questions of staff from the council.
I just have one question of staff. I, how does this affect ADUs?
Well, we adopted already 85%, so that would mean that this would kick in ADUs and work against affordability if we adopted it.
But, but that's for the junior ADU, isn't it?
So, this has no, the standards that the Fire Protection District proposes have no special protection for ADUs, so it's going to go back to the size...
Right.
Of the proposed ADU. If the ADU is an addition to an existing house, or existing poolhouse or structure, and exceeds that standard of 1,000 square feet and half, and half the existing structure, then that would trigger sprinklers for the entire structure, including the ADU. If an ADU is a full new build, so a whole new four walls in the back, that would also, under the Fire Protection District's requirements, trigger sprinklers.
So, okay, Wayne Maynard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, since I'm the only speaker, if I could have five minutes? Okay, because it might, it might take me a little bit more than three minutes, what I want to cover. With regards to the city manager's explanation, the ordinance also requires all non-commercial building, or all non-residential buildings to be sprinkled. The ordinance doesn't just deal with...
Right.
With additions, okay? And that's probably my biggest concern, actually. So, just introduction, I'm Wayne Maynard. I live in the city of Ojai. I'm a retired fire captain. I worked for the fire district for 36 years. Right now, I'm doing some part-time work for the district. Just want to disclose that. However, I'm here today as a, as a resident, representing myself as a resident of Ojai. Why I'm interested in this issue, it's because I've been involved with it for pretty much my entire career. The first district ordinance was adopted in the early 1980s, and I was involved with that project. I went to several, all the city councils and promoted it. I, I worked on it for many additions several times. So, I've been kind of following it for many years. The city of Ojai has supported the fire district sprinkler ordinance from the first ordinance that was adopted in the early 80s, for nearly 30 years. And it wasn't until the city created the Building Appeals Board, and they sent the ordinance to be reviewed by that, by that board, that the position changed. The city no longer supports the fire district's requirements. And I'm not going to go any more detail about that. So, we've talked about it many times. You guys have heard it. Tonight, I'm going to focus my comments on, on the purpose of the fire district, of the sprinklers, as it relates to the implementation of the, of the strategic plan for firefighting operations. There's an overall strategic plan of how the fire department puts out fires in buildings, and fire sprinkler ordinance is part of that strategic plan, because it limits the size of fires in buildings, basically. First of all, there's four different fire departments in the county. The fire departments, through automatic and mutual aid agreements, operate as a regional fire protection system. There's a single dispatch center, and the closest fire trucks, regardless of jurisdiction, respond to all the calls. Most structure fires responses to the Ojai Valley involve a mutual aid response. Every city and the county, except for the city of Ojai, has adopted fire sprinkler requirements more restrictive than what the state does. The state has a minimum standard. And the primary purpose and justification for that is that fires in sprinkler buildings require fewer resource commitments to put the fires out. It takes less time, less resources, particularly during, like, any kind of natural disasters, or road closures, things like that. Because Ojai is, of our isolation, it's even more important if we need to consider creas, increasing the number of sprinkler buildings in our community. We have dozens of buildings in the community that are sprinkled because of the district's ordinance over the decades. It's my contention that adopting the fire district ordinance is identified in the general plan safety element as a mitigating measure for fire protection issues that we have in the community. So, it'd be in compliance with the safety element by adopting the, the fire district's ordinance. A second issue with regards to the, to the strategic plan is the OSHA two-in, two-out rule. This was a new law that went into effect a few years before I retired. And basically, it's when a fire truck arrives on the scene of a structure fire, firefighters are not allowed to enter the building to extinguish the fire if there is not a known rescue. So, if you go into a commercial building late at night, and there's no known rescue, firefighters can't go in and start putting the fire out in that building until there's four firefighters on scene. Two advance the hose line to go in, two are outside, prepared to do a rescue for the two that go inside if necessary. We only carry, we only have three firefighters on our fire trucks, which means we can't advance a hose line until the second fire truck arrives. That's a potential delay, which is mitigated if the building has fire sprinklers, because the fire, the sprinklers control the size of fire or extinguish it. The third is firefighter safety. Not only do fire sprinklers increase the safety for building occupants, but it also improves firefighter safety. I've fallen through a roof. I've been injured on fires. The sprinklers put the fires out. It, it creates less of a potential hazard for our firefighters. And I think that's very important, especially it is to me. There's also some other environmental benefits for sprinklers. Fires in sprinkler buildings require less water for fire suppression. There's less air pollution released to the environment, because the fires are kept smaller. And there's less hazardous water runoff that goes into the storm drains and the waterways, because we're not dumping tons and tons of water on the building, because the fire sprinkler put it out. So, I would recommend to the council that they continue the support for the district, like they've done for decades, and approve the, the ordinance. Basically, you're ratifying it to allow the fire district to enforce it within the jurisdictional boundaries of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. I have one more card. Dale Hansen.
You may have another card soon. Bob just arrived. Anyway, I am a member, I'm Dale Hansen. I'm a member of the Building Appeals Board. And we vetted that issue so many times. It's just amazing to me that it keeps coming back. We've looked at all different angles. And I'm not going to go into all the details, because I have a, a support here now. But the, what really saves people from fires are fire alarms. Many times, fire sprinklers malfunction, and they go off when they weren't intended to. They also add another expense to buildings. And I think that we, we really need, if, if we value the, the work of the Building Appeals Board, we've been through this so many times, and given all of our reasons, I think that we should recognize, with all due respect to Wayne's comments, and I know he's been a fireman, and he understands, but there are other issues besides that. There are issues for the building owner, and there are issues about what fire sprinklers really do, as opposed to fire alarms. And so, I will let the next card speaker. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't read this. But I'll, I'll take a guess. Bob, come on up.
Good evening. This is a...
Not entirely a joke, either.
This is Big Daddy, I think.
This is getting to be beyond the pale. So, this will be our fourth go-round. Mr. Maynard, if you will review, said, he thought the important thing about us not doing this was that if we didn't do it, the other cities would un-adopt it. Now, that's the official record, which is our tape, which is on file. And I'm sure nobody's going to refute that, because we'll pull the tape and we'll look at it. The Building Appeal Board has unanimously gone over this thing four times. We looked at the imposition. We looked at what was going on. We agreed with the fire department that if they will go ahead and get the top firemen in the state to adopt this, we would welcome the change. We would welcome any change, because it would be law, and we wouldn't resist anything. But we haven't had a single fatality in a residential fire in this city. We have had a fatality in a garage, and we took care of that with fire alarms in the garage. I had a big fire here. You know, they waited till after the Thomas Fire, and two months later, we had a garage fire, and it was almost a seven-figure fire. And had we had that alarm, we wouldn't have had that, that type of a loss. And with insurance, everybody pays for that. So, this extra sprinklers is really going to add no benefit. It has in the past. It won't now. What it will do is it will victimize people that are probably not very adroit. We actually had somebody build a house 1,007 square feet, which would have meant that if they would have shortened the dimensions by three inches on the front and the back sides, it would have come in at nine, at 199 feet, instead of 1,007. And so, when you take... And so, when you take a look at this, is there really a difference where somebody has to do a thousand square feet, and I can do twenty-three-hundred square feet? And so, it seems to be inconsistent as to the fifty percent. Fires don't look at fifty percent, fires don't look at square footage. And the Building Appeal Board asked you for another thing while we're at this. If you're familiar with geography, and you know where Foothill Lane is, the north side of Foothill Lane is in the highest fire zone we have in the state of California. Right across the street, thirty feet, on the south side of the street, is in no fire zone whatsoever. Now, the last time I heard the numbers is we had flames three hundred feet, and blowing at eighty miles an hour wind at the top of Foothill. I don't think that fires respect artificial lines on maps. And I think you want to get around to adopting this ultra-high fire zone, because the ember casks is going to go from one end of the city to the next. No, it's not going to infect, and affect the insurance rates, because they're already ahead of you. They've already drawn a circle around Ojai. So, as of now, I'm not even selling new homeowner's insurance to people that are not with State Farm now. They won't be eligible to buy in the city, along with most of the other carriers. Couple of reasons. We never finished our water suppression system. We never did any mitigation of brush. We don't have a disaster plan in force, and, 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 you know, where people understand it, where we've noticed people. So, we have really done nothing to move us along from two years ago, when we lucked out, because we got a shift of wind. So, please consider that, and as far as the sprinklers go. If it's that important for seventy-nine hundreds, four-hundred-and-seventy-nine cities within California, and only a handful of them do this, there's got to be something different. I don't believe that the resources of the Ventura County Fire Department exceed those of the state fire marshal. And the state fire marshal has not come up with this code. And yes, we will have many conflicts with these ADUs of who's on first, and what the square footage is, and all the other things. And does it add to affordability? Of course it doesn't. You have extra plan checks, you have extra costs, you have extra material costs, you have extra testing. So, I'm all for sprinklers, but not the way we're doing it here. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any further cards, so let's bring it back to the council. Well, much as I respect Bob and others, I'd like to weigh in on some of the logic and consistency of what we do. And I think that's something, Bob, that you're concerned with, too. It's, if we were to take the argument that fire sprinklers aren't worth putting fire sprinklers in, why would we put them in ADUs that we're trying to make them affordable? Why do we have them in houses, at all? Why, you know, why do we require them? And what concerns me is that we're not, we're not doing this to, let's see, it's a thousand square feet. That's, that's a lot of, a lot of square footage. So, it's not like, you know, we're oppressing, you know, social justice issues of, of poor people. It's also, so, pardon me, I'm getting all choked up over this. It's also true that you're only going to be, when you, you have to have at least, what, fifty percent of the house, and at least ten thousand square feet, right?
No, not ten thousand, so-
Pardon, yeah, I mean, pardon me, yeah. No, that, you'd like, that one would be okay, right? The threshold would, I mean, a thousand square feet. When I see the number of houses that get flipped, where they buy it for less than a million dollars, make it really, really nice, and then have it on the market for almost two million dollars, it seems like having sprinklers put in that is not a bad thing. It also seems like it's contrary to our concern about keeping what affordable housing we have affordable. It, how does this, how does this hurt anything? If you're going to add a thousand square feet, and you finance it, yeah, it costs a little more. But I'll tell you, when you have to rent a house that's just been doubled in value, that costs the renter a whole lot more. So, it, it just seems to me, the consistency of the arguments, I don't get it. If, the, the idea that maybe Mr. Maynard or other people have said that this might be the tip of the spear, or the nose of the camel, and if it didn't happen, well, they're not doing it, isn't, isn't a problem, because it's setting a trend to go against it, but it doesn't mean it's a bad idea. I, to me, it doesn't. It seems like we're in the middle, you know, and what you just, what was just testified to us about the ember casks and all that, I totally agree with. I think we're in a high fire zone. I don't care what, you know, the CAL FIRE maps are. I think they just don't want to enter into the local domestic politics of drawing maps, and then getting into the issues of fire insurance rates. But from what I understand, the, the, you know, the underwriters have already figured that out long ago. They're the ones taking the risk, and they're setting the rates accordingly. So, we are in a high fire zone. We make everybody who builds a new house do this, we make anybody who even builds an ADU do it. So, why would we want to exempt somebody who potentially, you know, I mean, I'm in the, in the construction business at one point? You know, why is that such a burden? When it actually does, it, it may not be the only thing that helps control the fire, but it certainly helps. So, it's really weighing that extra cost for the investor versus our housing stock and the price of housing, and whether or not we believe sprinklers are worth it. There are a lot of places where they say, why would you have sprinklers in residential? That just adds to the expense of housing, and we don't have enough affordable housing. But I don't hear anybody wanting to repeal the other. I don't even know if we could do that, but, so. Bill, I'm sorry for going on like that.
I just want to make sure I, you knew I had a different opinion.
No, I know you do, but even without taking it, but I will take it.
I listened carefully to you, and I, and I do have some specific. What I don't like about what this going above state code does is not having to do with new construction, but the fact that this, and, and at least as I read it, you got to read the whole thing, there's some significant retrofitting costs. And retrofitting fire sprinkles, spar sprinkler systems is much more expensive than new construction. Much more expensive. And when you have provisions in some of these things, like, "For the purposes of application of the Automatic Fire Protection System provisions contained within this chapter, far walls shall not be considered as creating separate buildings." Think of the arcade. In other words, your, your, the provisions in here, if you read through them, a lot of the application to it is to, is significant triggering of a very expensive retrofit, which when I studied this, and it's been a while, can be three, four, or more times the cost of new construction and fire sprinklers, systems. There are a lot of issues with fire sprinkler systems that I think the BAB vets, has vetted, you know, multiple times, much better than I, than I can just speak to tonight. But I also want to put up a different opinion. I have read scholarly studies, believe it or not, that question the mass application of fire sprinkler systems in residential areas that in while, that can actually work against fire protection in terms of all going on at the same time in a, in a wildfire condition.
I remember in there.
And that has caused problems. So, it's not just a all-good, no-bad aspect. And it, it can, especially in terms of the triggering, the very high retrofit costs, be much more expensive than as, you know, other forms of fire safety mitigation.
Right, but why would we want to necessarily make that a major consideration? Are we encouraging people to, you know, double the size of things?
Well, we're trying to, I believe we're, by state policy and city policy, encouraging infill, residential infill, as part of an answer to affordable housing.
But probably not on remodels, I would think that'd be new construction.
Well, in-
And it would be under the laws with HEFFIRE?
Well, all I, all I'm saying is that when you, you do more than just, this, there's a lot of triggering here. For example, we have, part of the ADUs we're talking about that's mandated by the state is creating separate dwelling units within existing residences. You can add to buildings. I just view this as, there's a reason why the State Farm Marshal has not adopted this. And I just think that it, it works counterproductive to our overall policy goals, and also has unintended consequences that I don't want to impose on our citizenry. That's my position.
Can you just speak to, answer a couple of questions?
Mr. Council?
Sure. Just want to clear a couple of things. Good evening. Masuraghi Fire Marshal with the county fire. I just want to clear a couple of things, so we're all kind of understand before we take a vote. One of the things that you brought up about the firewall, and you mentioned the example of the arcade.
Right.
Arcade is an existing building. What this is talking about is if an existing building that was previously sprinkled because of the firewall, because the square footage was reduced because of the firewall, if that firewall is breached, it would require sprinklers. That has nothing to do with the arcade. We have done another project over here, where there was an existing firewall. The building that got sprinkled was just to the firewall. There was nothing beyond that. We didn't go an entire building, we just sprinkled a portion of it up to the firewall. So, that example doesn't apply to this section.
Well, that's not what I'm reading in the plain language.
I, and I'm, I'm here to tell you that we've been applying it for over thirty-some years. Exactly what it is.
This is new, that you're asking us to adopt.
That is, the purpose of that firewall is, was because at one point, the ordinance only required sprinklers when we had five thousand square foot or more. At those, at the time that this was the requirement, there was an allowance of putting a firewall to break the building into a smaller size. This section applies to, if we gave you that permission to not put sprinklers, because you had the firewall, and today you're breaching that firewall, then you put sprinklers. Has nothing to do with an example of arcade. So, that, I just want to make, make sure that we are clear. Now, with regard to ADU, from the State Farm Marshal, we have the interpretation that any ADU, detached ADU, if the building, the residence is not fire sprinkler, the ADU does not require to be fire sprinkler. Only if the main residence has fire sprinklers.
What if you're modifying a primary residence for an ADU?
I'm sorry, say it again.
What if you're modifying a primary residence for an ADU?
If you go over fifty percent, and over a thousand. I mean, that's a major, significant addition to a house. These numbers that you see here are significant additions. They're not little bit here, a little bit there. So, that requirement, the requirements here, does not affect the ADU to the extent that it is being talked about. The other one I want to talk about is that you mentioned that this issue has been talked about, and why are we talking about it again? Because every three years, the code change, and we're required to come to you. If it was my option, I wouldn't have come to, to the Building Appeals Board. I would have come to the council. This is not my, my choice. So, I'm not here to burden you with re-going over these over and over again. Believe me, it doesn't pleasure me to go through this every three years myself.
Just address the council and answer the questions, rather than debate the other people's testimony.
Exactly, I wouldn't have, the reason it's coming to you is because of exactly the council required it. So, I just want to be clear with that one. The state requires, this is regardless of our ordinance, the state requires sprinklers in all residential occupancies. Done.
New.
All new. Now, the question you ask is that, well, if this was so good, if the ordinance is so good, why wouldn't the state do it? I'm going to answer that question by saying that if the state thought having a local ordinance is a bad idea, they would have prevented from local ordinances having any ordinances, any jurisdictions having any local ordinances. The reason the state does the minimum, and allows the local jurisdictions to go above that minimum, is because the geography, the topography, the climatic condition throughout this state is not the same for every jurisdiction. So, every jurisdiction will look at how their resources, with respect to climate, with the respect with the topography, how do they best need to protect themselves? The state gives that ability to the local jurisdiction to make amendments, to make ordinances, to make their communities safer. The state doesn't want to come and just make that blanket requirement throughout the state.
Well, and we've done that as, and we've done that as a city.
And that's, that's the-
Done that as a city.
Yes, and I'm saying, that's the reason the state allows us to have these ordinance.
And we've done that as a city.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't doubt that. When we come to you and ask you for this section, is because we look at, as Wayne mentioned, we look at the overall strategy for the fire protection district, and all the cities that are under the jurisdiction of the fire protection district that we serve. So, we look at it globally. This is one tool within the toolbox, with many other ones that we use. We use the weed abatement, we use the code requirement for construction, we use fire sprinklers. We use a variety of tools to do the, to provide fire protection for your community. This is one of the tools. So, what my argument has been over the past couple of adoption, is that give us the tools we need to do our job. This is one of our tools. If the cost was such a huge issue, you would have have here, people fill here, telling you, don't do it, because it's costing us too much. We did this for thirty years, exact same ordinance, for thirty years in the city of Ojai, with no problem. And then, nobody came and said, this is too costly, don't do it. None of the residents have ever called me up and said, don't do this, this is too costly.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate the input.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, Ryan.
Has the county adopted this?
Yes.
Okay.
Has the county, you mean the unincorporated area?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just want to make sure.
And the only other cities.
Yeah, I got that, I just wanted to-
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, Bill, if we don't think fire sprinkler systems have real value, then I would understand this. And if we thought that because they malfunction sometimes, that would be a reason not to have fire sprinkler systems. And if we were doing this and putting a huge burden on, you know, a renter, or some small operation. But when you talk about the size we're dealing with here, it's, it's a luxury, like a swimming pool and other things, that in more expensive estate-type situations, it's just put into the financing of the deal, and spread over the thirty years. And in some cases, it's paid for cash by the person who wants to do it. It just seems to me that the, to not do a fire protection thing, because we are not wanting to burden people who want to make major expansions to homes, or, or flip homes, and make them much, you know, more palatial. I'm all for making palatial homes, if there are people who want to buy them, but I don't see that that's a reason not to continue the sprinklers. So, I'm not going to say anymore, I, maybe, I'll make a motion, and we'll see if it'll go anyplace. I move that we do enact the, was it Title Line, is it? Do I have the right titles? Yeah, Chapter Nine, pardon me. And, and accept the idea of the, as the other cities in the county have on the fire sprinklers. Is, do I have a second?
You have a second.
And let's sprinkler them all. Why is a thousand square feet any less dangerous than five hundred? And if they're going to use twenty-five thousand on the wall, then sprinkle every one of them.
Okay, maybe we should come back and amend it again at a later date, but I don't think that's a, an argument not to do something.
Just amend it.
So, all right, okay, we have a motion and a second, I don't know how-
Just a quick comment, I just, my take on this is that we have professional individuals that have studied this, and that have, do this, you know, their lives are at stake. And so, I have a tendency to want to lean towards what they have to say. It's not to say that BAB hasn't done their homework, and hasn't an opinion that, that is, that has some validity. It, to me, would be no different than if our new police captain came to us and stated something about public safety, and wanted to implement these programs. Who am I to question him, someone who does it for a living? And so, that's where I'm at on this. I just struggle questioning fire, I struggle, struggling questioning police. Their lives are on the line, and saving our lives is- Their lives are on the line, and saving our lives is on the line. So that's why I have to support this.
Mayor.
Yeah, Bill?
I do not, don't, I mean, we, our job as council people is, is not to delegate our judgment. Our, our job is to take the best available information we have for the most qualified people that we make a judgment. And, you know, we just, I think we're just experiencing, frankly, the problem with council people in another city delegating judgment. And I think that it's important, you know what I'm talking about. And so I think it's important not to just say, well, because the experts say something, we should do it. You know, history is replete with experts giving, you know, not looking at the, you know, global considerations outside their specific considerations. And that's where I'm coming from.
Well, I knew when I opened that can of worms, I would receive that response from you, Bill, and I accept it. That's okay. I think this and what the City of Antioch did are entirely two different things. This is about, this is about lives being in danger. And, and I'm sorry, Wayne and the fire captain have a heck of a lot more experience at fighting fires than I do, and the same is Mr. Rivera over there regarding police matters. And I'm not going to interject my opinion or my thoughts or my feelings into something that these professional men bring to the table. So that's, that's where I stand on that.
Can I ask you--
Susan?
I'm sorry that I stepped out when I did because I thought I had an understanding. First of all, didn't this come before us every year since we've been here?
Every couple of years, yeah, it comes--
Should be every three years.
Every three years.
Well, you, I heard every three years, but my recollection is every year. Am I wrong?
It was because we moved it down the road.
Yeah, it last came, I think it was October of 2017, but it was because it was coming late in the cycle.
Okay, okay.
And we're on top of it this time.
All right. Now, don't laugh at me, but I, how did, how exactly do these sprinklers work when we have the kind of fires that we have here in Ojai? Like, does something, do people just use them to wet down their house? Do they get triggered by a fire? How does it work?
Yeah, they're internal and they get triggered by an internal fire, so it's not necessarily for the wildland type fires.
Doesn't protect the outside. That's one of the arguments against it, but--
And if too many trigger at the same time in a specific area can cause pressure problems.
Yeah, that's what, that was my next question. So what happens then?
Lose water pressure. And you have less pressure in the fire hydrant.
And don't we have problems with that already?
Yes.
So, you know, I, I really, I really don't know because I can, I can, I hear the pros and cons, okay? So, but I don't like the idea of losing water pressure, and I don't--
But what all new construction does that? New construction?
Yeah.
Is that not correct? Every time a sprinkler system goes off, it will cause that problem. And the firefighters also have to use the, what we call fire hydrants in this town that, and it's admitted that we are not where we would like to be, but we have very old systems that have to be replaced. I don't see that that is the, well--
Okay, but the concern is not for daily, like the ordinary fires, which we have very few of, right? The concern is mostly when we have our wildfires or what, because--
It is to contain a fire.
To contain--
Two different issues.
And cost of retrofitting, triggered retrofitting.
Well, yeah, that's, I mean, the argument is the cost benefit. And the, the argument is being made that it costs more, and that's true, but we require it of everything else. And even though retrofitting, Bill's correct, retrofitting frequently is much, or can be much more expensive. But again, it's only going to be triggered on a major addition. How many people put a thousand square feet on their house?
Okay, so like my little house, which is probably, that's, it doesn't affect any, just for my own clarity and for--
Your whole house, I think you said, is 850 square feet, right?
I don't know, probably, something like that.
Yeah, so you'd be over doubling the size of your house before this would even be a concern.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not, I'm not worried. But it, okay, can you give the public and me a summary again, exactly what the, the consequences are if we vote yes?
It will require that, well, maybe I should have the city attorney state it. It, yeah, if you increase the size of the structure fifty percent, I believe, and at least a thousand square feet.
Correct, correct.
Well, there's also things like previously exempted of less than 701 and other provisions like that. There's a number of provisions in here.
That's also correct. The, the fire protection district's ordinance picks up a few points. The one that's received the most discussion is the sprinkler's requirements. The state trigger, the state trigger for sprinklers is new construction, but the fire protection district would go further and require sprinklers on, for residential occupancies, an addition that is greater than both a thousand square feet and half of the house.
Okay, I got it now. So why--
And then there's further requirements, as Councilman Wyrick noted, on firewall situations.
Okay. And, and, and why wouldn't a reasonable person do this voluntarily?
Cost.
Because it's cheaper.
But I mean, they, they want to protect their investment?
Not if they're not going to live in it, you know? I used to build houses. I didn't want to put sprinklers in them because it had to increase the price of the mortgage or the price of the, of the product.
And the rent.
Right, yeah, and the rent, yeah.
Bigger water meter.
Yeah, that's another problem.
A bigger water meter?
It's a lot of money. And the benefit cost issue is--
No, that's, yeah, that's the point, yeah.
So, I mean, and, and, and wouldn't a better way to handle this is to, just to have building material that's not so flammable?
And that's the direction this council went, was hardening.
Yeah.
And we supported that.
Rather than, that's what we supported, yes.
Okay, are we ready for a vote?
We're ready for a vote.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Portemblats?
No.
Okay, well, thank you all for listening. And thank you for coming down and making the pitch.
That was hard.
Okay, our next topic is fire hazard severity zone map, so.
Do I have to go on another card?
A virtual card.
Yeah, I think it's here.
I wanted to hear this.
Okay. Bob Daddy, so he can go home and get his rest, yeah.
I was home resting.
I know, and we interrupted, and I apologize for that.
Mr. Maynard got up. Fire severity. Let's go back. I'm going to make you guys feel better about what you did. The chief and I would both believe that if you're going to have a firearm, you're going to have a handgun. Saying that you don't need a trigger guard on a 22, but we need a trigger guard on a 38. If you're gonna sprinkler homes, sprinkler homes. This thousand feet, I've always been against. You want to sprinkler it, 25,000 on the remodel, you sprinkler it, you bring everything up, I'm fine. Anyhow, fire severity.
Topic.
If, if we're talking about the fire severity zone again, the way we have our map, and they're right, severity in this area is very great, please don't not adopt what you need to adopt, which is the severity map that blankets because you're concerned about what somebody's doing for insurance. We have a local businessman that had a little smoke claim. He's on Del Oro, over by your property. His insurance rate went up to $13,000 a year. Now, a lot of people didn't get canceled because the state law didn't allow cancellations for fire victims for two years after this fire. They're now getting their pink slip and they're getting much, much, much higher insurance. So please, don't, don't feel sorry for the insurance company. Don't make an affordability issue with an insurance company. It, it's not going to change by moving the map down. What it will do, it was allow our building department to go ahead and stipulate more stringent rules. And we probably need to come back with some more fire Title IX codes to add into that. Thank God Casitas is moving along with its ancient system, and they are getting some significant headway with that, and we're getting much larger volume pipes. But I think it's really time to adopt outside of SB 50, Weiner's attempt on the removal of the R1 zoning. I know that the severity is one of the outs for that, but we have been asking for a few years prior to this proposal for this new ADU zoning, that the city become an entire map. Now, we've had Doug Campbell, which is the fire behavioralist, go through, submitted a lot of information. We looked at that information. And again, with this ember cast, 2,000-foot ember cast, we're only a four-square mile down. And, and so we're not going to escape one end from the other. So I would ask you to go ahead and adopt the map and make this thing a uniform zone within the city. Thank you.
And, and good night. You got some more, you got some more stuff. Heidi, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Johnston, members of the city council and staff. My name is Heidi Whitman. I live at 821 North Signal Street. I'm opposed to the adoption of these self-inflicted, very high and severe fire hazard map changes. I respectfully request that a better job be done to identify, as the staff report says, the unclear additional unintended consequences from this potential change before any additional consideration by your council. I also, I understand that this has been before the building appeal board, and I certainly respect Mr. Daddy, but he's also an insurance agent in town, and so I believe that he has a conflict of interest when he talks about this matter. I live in, on North Signal Street and have lived there with my family for thirty years in a 100-year-old house. It's 100 years old because it hasn't burned down. In thirty years, we've been evacuated one time for the Thomas Fire. I'm not aware of any houses in the city limits of Ojai burning down from a wildfire in the thirty years that we have lived here. I am, however, aware of some of the consequences of this designation, including greatly increased insurance cost, cancellation of insurance, the impacts on property values, or even the ability to sell your home, and the impact on housing affordability. And I know this firsthand, so I work where the Heisus Seda fire happened in Santa Barbara about nine years ago. Our friends in Santa Barbara County who live in this area in modest homes pay $15,000 per year in homeowners' insurance premiums. One of our friends, their coverage has been dropped three times, and now they can only get homeowners' coverage through the State Fair Plan. So I'm asking that you don't self-inflict this on property owners without thorough research on the financial impacts of this change. This was not something that was brought to you by fire officials whom I greatly respect. This is something that we're proposing to do to ourselves. And so perhaps not all of the insurance companies have yet drawn a circle around Ojai. And so for those of us who are still trying to work to live here and raise a family, I ask that you get some additional information before you make this change. Thanks.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, Bill.
Sure.
What was your name? I'm sorry.
Whitman, Heidi Whitman, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The example you cited, was there some interaction with the, the local jurisdiction that caused--
Yeah, there was a map change, and--
So that happened prior to the--
Yeah, and, and I--
Is that what you're saying?
I do think that there's probably enough information, if someone were to go get it, on what the impacts of this are. So I, I certainly believe that the city council is looking out for all of us, but when the staff report says right in it, oh, we don't really know what the unintended consequences are, it makes me think that maybe we need to do some more homework. So, thank you.
Thank you. This was, what, on here as a request?
I wanted to talk about this.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Hi, Doug.
Hi. My name's Doug LeBar. I live right down the street. And it's been a constant march towards solving the lack of affordable housing in California for several years through the passing of legislation. I was just looking at SB 1069 in 2016. There was AB 2299 in 2016, and then in last year, there was AB 881, AB 68, and SB 13. Now there's SB 50. And all of them are designed to try to get more and more affordable housing in communities that are not providing it. They're all designed to provide housing to a growing disenfranchised segment of our And adopting a fire, higher fire hazard severity zone for Ojai will increase insurance rates, allow for possible cancellation of policies, and preventing the closing of escrows for lack of ability to obtain fire insurance policies. I've been in this valley since 1974, and I've witnessed the entire valley burn twice. I mean, I, I've seen fires march across Sulphur Mountain and all across the north hills and burned everything. And it never burned the city of Ojai. People in, within the city, there were no homes lost in the city of Ojai. The people who get burned are the people who have, who are living on the, the transition zone to the wild areas. And on the last issue, they were talking, you were talking about fire sprinklers. It just, it occurs to me that the fire sprinklers really protect fires that occur, that start inside of a house, not the outside of a house. And everybody is so aware of fires right now because of the fires that we just had, and they're on the outside. The fire sprinklers don't stop--
That's right.
--fires that happen from all the burning embers being swept across from high winds and dryness. So I just wanted to share my thoughts on that.
Okay, thank you, Doug. I don't have any more cards, and I don't see any more hands. So where, where are we on the matter?
Where's that quote about unintended consequences?
It's on page two. It's second paragraph from the end.
I think it's technically a law.
And we have reached out to both insurance companies and other cities, and we haven't been able to get clear answers. So that is something that at this point, we don't, we don't have clarity on what, what those consequences could be.
I see. Well--
Well, I think historically, and I'm not sure what, how the, the town was developed at the time, and do we, do we have any fire people here, fire marshals now? Where, I've been told by the retired fire chief, Mr. Roper, that there was a fire that burned down at the back of the arcade. So it's not like it can't come into town. I think, what, 19--
1948.
No, my house didn't burn down. It was there in 1948.
Well, yeah, and that's, that's, yeah, but that's great, you know, that it didn't burn down. But I'm just saying that it does burn into towns, and my granddaughter lives up in, well, did live up in Paradise, and everything, you know, up there. We're, we're faced with a different world. I'm not saying that's necessarily, this is the answer. I'm just, just pointing out from a factual situation that it has come into the city. And, you know, fire departments will tell you that the intensity of a fire in a burning structure is substantially greater than the intensity of a fire in the wildlands. Of course, if you've got a blowtorch fire with an east wind, I mean, that, that trumps everything. No, no pun intended. The, so anyway, this was put on the agenda at the request of two members of the council. That would be a motion and a second, or at least some discussion.
I have a question. I have a question. Why is it so difficult to get clear answers to the questions you were asking, do you think? Is that's a fair question? I, that's okay.
Well, you mean, you mean like the, what is the answer to, like, the insurance companies?
Yeah, I mean, they're asking--
Well, most insurance--
Why is it so hard to get a clear answer, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
It used to be that insurance companies, you know, used to, they created fire zones and put their ratings based solely on that. I think that the way the world is changing, why would a fire, why would an underwriter want to, you know, get involved in the politics of it by saying, well, we'll raise your rates? What I'm being told, I don't know that this is accurate, and I do agree that we should be sure we, we know what we're doing, but my understanding is, is that there aren't very many, if any, underwriters, you know, interested in writing insurance in this valley anymore. I don't know what we do. I guess, what is it, the Fair Plan or whatever is where you go to? what is it, the Fair Plan or whatever is where you go to?
The Fair Plan is under order from the State Department of Insurance to let you expand the Fair Plan, add more coverages, higher limits, and add liability, and make it more of an internal, rather than strip-down policy, and add water coverage, which isn't covered inside, broken pipes, overflowed.
But that's going to be the source, right? So, the regular, a private insurance company, the answer to the question, I guess, is that there are a lot of things that, I think that the state doesn't want to get involved in the internal affairs of communities for the same reason on sprinklers. You know, it's very controversial. It adds costs. What Doug says is correct. I mean, everything goes, you put in the construction costs. I guess, what my trouble with the logic of all of it is, is we already have it for everything that is new and everything that's commercial. And we don't have that many places that are going to want to, other than the idea of the expansion flip and investment in housing. How many houses are getting 1,000 square feet and over 50% expansion in the valley? So, maybe it's an issue without a real consequence, both ways, to do it or to not do it. But why not doing it when the fire district's recommending? So, I don't know how to...
Could we give a chance to the city manager to maybe weigh in on that, too?
Yeah, I'd say that for the insurance companies, we've had trouble getting anybody to say anything on the record. And I just think it comes down to, it likely will affect rates or insurability, and they don't want to say that clearly.
Are there insurance consultants that aren't tied to companies that could give us some clearer answers?
We could reach out to someone.
I'm just asking. I...
The other thing we've done, the second part of that equation is other cities. And so, we had heard other cities in the last 16 months since we had previously considered this, had looked into the issue. We've reached into, reached out to the cities that we had heard of, and none of them have actually done it either. So, we were waiting for someone else to do it, to find out what the, you know, what their analysis was. We haven't been able to confirm that any of the cities has done it.
I think one of the, I think one of the things that we could look at or ask questions to is, you know, we fought two years ago for this community to remove homes that were in the high flood zones. Ray Grant did that to protect individuals in our community from having to pay more in insurance. So, the question is, how is that different from creating now a high fire zone? So, maybe we need to ask the question, did insurance rates go up in Ojai? Or would they, would have they gone up in Ojai if we had not fought for those reductions in the flood areas? Because to me, it's the same. If you're in a high flood zone, you're going to pay more. Maybe Bob wants to talk to that, but you're going to pay more for insurance. So, if you're in a high fire zone, why wouldn't you assume you're going to make, you're going to pay more for insurance?
You're definitely going to pay less.
And I think that there's, if the goal is to harden off existing homes, I think we can do that in a different manner. We could do that through our codes without having to go through something like this. So, I think there's, I think there's a way of balancing it so that we're not enforcing unintended consequences, and we really think through what we want to harden off in our construction practices in the community. So, I think that might be the better way to go on this.
And we did do the codes. This most recent building cycle, we adopted the re-roof requirements and some other requirements.
Okay, that might be something we send back to BAB and have them discuss, internalize, and come back to us with more areas in the community that we can harden off in the construction aspects.
Ryan?
James, you have a state agency called ISO, Insurance Service Organization. They're independent. They set the rules that everybody has jobs. They're the ones that come up with the fire severity and all these other things. The insurance companies, they're independent. They'll give you all the answers you want. They're public, and they're the ones that set the rules.
Okay, thank you, Ryan.
I just want to make a couple of things clear in my opinion on this. I think it's kind of strange that we are disagreeing with the Fire Protection District on fire sprinklers, and then we are going with potentially adding the whole city into a high-fire zone. That seems very hypocritical in some way. But I want to make a couple of things clear. This, SB 50 was brought up. I don't believe this would affect the application of SB 50 to Ojai because it is done locally. Creating a high-fire zone locally does not exempt you from SB 50. I want to make that clear to everyone. The other thing is, this literally says in our packet that we don't know what this is going to do. We literally don't know. Now, I don't know how, I mean, I just don't know how. If we don't have any idea what this is actually going to do, from unintended consequences to even, it doesn't say building changes what they would actually be. It just says that we could have higher standards. It says it could lead to more costs. We have the second highest median home price sale in the county. We have this constant housing cost issue. I just don't know how we could, it seems, I don't personally think I could vote for something without really understanding the consequences. And it's not clear on here that there is any specific benefit to this. So, I, unless we want to get information that's going to answer those questions, I just, I feel it'd be irresponsible to vote for it.
I think we need more research. I'd like, I'd like to just continue the item until we get some more complete information. You know, you, you know, everything from the SB 50 issue to the issue of insurance ratings, to the issue of, you know, what's the implications in terms of setting itself for better hardening? I mean, yeah, you're right. We don't understand enough, but I think we need more information.
I can't say passing this would make Ojai any safer. All I can say is it might make it more expensive, and we don't have any more information than that. And that's, it seems like a very difficult thing to stand behind, especially when we just talked about the cost-effectiveness of sprinklers and the fire people saying, hey, they want that. They're not even here saying we need this.
You know, there's other, like, does it qualify us for, you know, applications for assistance that we might otherwise not be able to obtain? I don't know the answers to any of that. So, I'd like to get more information.
I think, is it ISO? Is that... Okay, so, James has got that. So, if everybody's in agreement, let's have, we'll take another run at it and see if we can get more answers, because obviously, we're trying to raise the cost of things. And we want, if we do raise the cost, we want to be sure we're safer because of it.
Only less than Westlake, if you wanted to know.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to the, let's see, we've continued item number eight. So, we go to number nine. It says, "Requests from two council members to..."
Seven.
Did I miss seven?
No, we're on seven now.
We're on seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I jumped it. Solar energy options for city facilities.
Yeah, and this item is actually, it's on the agenda. I think, you know, I'm confident that it's an item that council would support. It's basically on the agenda because it will require a decent amount of staff time, more than a typical RFP. So, it's on the agenda to basically have council tell us to prioritize this project appropriately. But the idea is, with all of the other climate resiliency efforts that we're putting into place, one thing that we haven't done yet is looked into solar power options, including panels, battery backup, and/or microgrid opportunities. Late last year, Councilmember Haney and Councilmember Wyrick did assemble a group of stakeholders who started looking into this. And they have done the initial research on some different options. We're at the point where we can move forward with getting some information, but it would require doing an energy audit and developing an RFP, which, for solar power, can be fairly technical, and it takes a little more effort than a standard RFP. So, this item's just on the agenda because it's, it will be a decent amount of staff time, but I'm confident council...
Can you outsource? So, it's not such a burden on the staff?
Yeah, that's actually an option. We can, we, I think we could do it within the city manager's authority so that, I think, we, we're having some issues with our Community Development Department where we've really cut back on contract planning. So, we are kind of limited right now. So, this would be a good option.
I understand. It's just, I'm just thinking, I mean, to me, this is an example of the kind of thing that we can more seriously consider of Measure C passes.
Right. Yes.
You know, and...
And this would fit in with those categories of projects that could be funded.
So, we're going to know soon. And I, you know, I'm wondering if, maybe we could take some baby steps there and see if C passes?
Yep.
And, because I don't, I'm very sensitive to the issue of burden on staff time.
Let me, yeah. Ryan. What do you think, James? I mean, is it a good idea to get this started now with anticipation of later? I mean, I don't necessarily, I mean, obviously, if Measure C passes, it'd be easier to fund this. But I think this is something that we may need either way. I mean, I think an energy audit of the city's facilities and some of these other things seem like, I don't care whether Measure C passes, they might need to be done anyway. So, why not sooner than later?
That's true.
An intern to do it, maybe?
Yeah, we actually, we are talking to an intern right now that we're going to have work on this, too. But the energy audit is a good point, that that's good to move forward. The other thing is that there are options that have been identified, like the power purchase agreements that won't have upfront costs.
Right.
So, it's not necessarily only doable with Measure C, but Measure C would definitely help. And so, I think we, there, it's worth us finding out what those proposals would be, because there may be some that we can start working on right away.
Okay. So, would it be maybe a good idea to prioritize a couple of things we can do in the interim, and then come back and approve the rest later for the, especially the RFP process? Sounds like it may be more complicated, or is that the, is that the best, most efficient way to go about it?
I think, I think the idea of authorizing us to proceed with the RFP process, whether it's through staff, or if it could be done through an administrative agreement under the city manager's authority, which means under, you know, $25,000, which it should be. If we can get the authority to do that moving forward, we can start getting that information and be prepared to move forward in the next couple of months.
I'd support that.
Okay. I would move that we do that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any? Well, I don't know.
Are you going to get out of your chair this time?
Don't wake me up next time. I won't be down here.
I'm sorry. I wish we hadn't.
I'm going to wait for the two officials over there to stop conferring, so I can get their attention.
Right, okay. Go ahead. You can talk over them.
Waiting for you.
Hi. It's always been my assumption that you can call SCE and ask them for an energy audit at no cost, and they'll be able to provide you current performance, past performance, increased performance, and what happened with our new alliance with the green energy issue, and what we're paying. And I don't know why that doesn't start immediately. The other thing is, when you bring up C, I'm very concerned. I'm just highly concerned. If we go with the power purchase and you go with somebody like SPUR, we can't even buy the system for seven years. That is the agreement. That's just locked in. That's just the way it is. And I don't see how we can spend Measure C money for costs that we're not going to incur should we go with that route, because there will be no upfront cost. So, when you start looking in that, please make sure we vet that and don't send mixed messages, because my assumption was that Measure C was going to be earmarked money for certain things. So, we were not going to hand it out to this coalition and that coalition and this cooperative.
I think anyone suggested that.
And that study, as we do. This thing is going to be for infrastructure, for things we need, roads, code, fire abatement, solar, which is, which is...
If we need expert help preparing a RFP.
But I don't understand why we would have to pay for things that are at no cost. And my understanding is, is I've never heard of SCE charging for an energy audit, and I wouldn't know why that wouldn't be the first step. If you're going to have these other outside people come in to an energy audit, I think that's great, because we can do an aggregated system here between the lower maintenance yard and all the way around. And that's kind of a different issue. So, I would hope as part of your measure that you start an energy audit with somebody immediately, because it doesn't matter whether C goes through or not. What matters is, is we're going to have to just go with solar. That's just the way it's going to be. And the faster we start, the faster we get done. So, please.
I'm sure your step one is, you know, getting ahold of Edison and seeing what services could be immediately provided.
The reason that's on the agenda is because we've been told we need council approval to authorize the energy audit from the energy audit provider.
So, we have a second in motion to do just that?
Yeah.
Okay. Further? If not, okay.
No, I just wanted to, no, we spent a lot of time investigating this.
Mainly your instigation. You commend you for that.
Well, again, I know the names are in here.
Did a great job.
But we should thank Christopher Whalen. We should thank Jamie Fleming. We should thank Bob Daddy. We should thank Jim Selman. There was a lot of effort. We should thank James and Bill. There was a lot of energy put into this. And I think we have to look at this as phases. You know, we're looking at solarizing the municipal fatalities first, and then looking at how us leaning, hopefully, that inspires residential people to do it and inspires commercial entities to do it. The other part of this is, the biggest part of this is the battery backup system. So, if we're looking at Measure C funds, I'm looking at Measure C funds down the road for battery support and that technology and how it can be integrated. But right now, companies like the SPUR, I know that you, we could probably give you guys more information on that, but Forefront Power, I thought, James, that they were willing to do the energy audit of the facilities for free.
Yep.
So, there's things, you know, aside from what Mr. Daddy said, that there are entities here that would be willing to do that for us. In fact, they weren't the only one. We interviewed about four of these companies, and they all pretty much were in agreement that they would help in that. The other part of it is, was with companies like Forefront and SPUR, they integrate their RFP into their contract. So, they have the technical knowledge, and they have the past RFPs that they could pass on to us. So, again, we could cut the costs down considerably by going with someone like that, if we go, if we go with systems like that. So, there are some substantial savings. And I agree with Bob that this needs something, and it sounds like council's behind it, that we need to move on quickly.
Okay. Is there any objection to the motion? If not, the city manager?
We need to vote. Is refinancing it?
Well, are we spending any money, or are we just authorizing?
It's just under James's...
Maybe.
Yeah, this doesn't require a recorded individual vote.
Okay.
Okay. So, if there is, I see no objection to the motion, so the staff is so directed. And let's move to item number nine. And this is potential expansion of the skate park lease. It says, "Two council members have asked for it. Would one of them like to..."
Yeah, we can speak up about it.
Yeah, but the reason I'm looking towards the city manager is, we had a conversation where I believe he's had some preliminary evaluation and actual discussion with the school superintendent on this matter.
Yeah, so...
And I, you know, I thought it might be a good way to start.
Yeah. So, the item is to, is the request from two council members to discuss potential expansion and extension of the skate park lease from the school district. And although the superintendent could not be here today, she had a previously scheduled conference. We have met and already began discussions. The school district is open to some ideas and actually has some ideas. So, we...
Wonderful.
Yeah, we can move it forward.
And the idea was just to authorize the city manager to engage in the discussion?
Yeah, 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 yeah. All for it.
That's all?
So, I just wanted to, Mayor?
Randy?
I just wanted to touch on, you know, I think one of the, one of the things I'm hearing, the pushback is the fact that you can't have food sources with other activities. And so, I've inquired with my brother-in-law down in La Jolla, because their Sunday market has food, has music, and has apparel, houseware. It's a big farmer's market. So, I didn't want that to be an impediment. And so, I've asked them to give me some information on how they do it, how they've done it down there. And again, I think that would be part of our inquiries as to how to get around that on the front end, rather than waiting till the back end and say, "Oh, by the way, you can't do this because you can't mix these environments."
Yeah, and Chair?
Yeah.
I just, I want to make it very clear. I consider these discreet considerations.
Right.
You know, you know, looking at the long-term status of this institution, the skate park, looking at possible ways of enhancing parking capacity where we need it, as well as some money that can be going to the school system, farmer's market, the commemorative plaque, those are all discreet issues. So, it's not an all or none. I want to make it very clear. I just want to get the, I thought we could authorize the city manager to understand that we are behind him in these discussions.
Yeah, I will make the comment that since we have had discussions, although they were preliminary, even though they were five years old with the school district about that particular property, I just think we ought to be, I don't know, we just don't know what's going to happen with that property. I don't want us to move into something that's not consistent or impedes the ability of what may happen there. I think we ought to just be cognizant of that, although I think looking into it is appropriate.
There's nothing irrevocable here, you know, in my, my suggestion is just make it, make it clear, but...
And as far, and as far as the second issue regarding the plaque, I just want to state I'm in complete favor. I think it's, and Mr. Daddy's here, and from the Hilgers family and everyone, especially the loss of Chris Hilgers recently, they just really did an amazing... especially the loss of Chris Hilgers recently, um, they just really did an amazing job. I still wanna give you and the Hilgers all the credit they deserve for all the effort that went into the skate park, so I am definitely supportive of that when we bring it back.
I think I'm fine with this. We give direction to engage in discussion.
Move forward.
Mayor, is this, this is an agenda item? Have we opened it up for public discussion?
We have right now.
Why are you making me do this? On council.
I'm gonna keep you up all night.
Once we woke him up...
Put in a card, they will know.
As the incorporator of Skate Ojai, still, and we turned in our reincorporation paper to be compliant with the state and the Internal Revenue Service like few of our, uh, little community groups literally do, um, I would ask you to review the lease outside of any other endeavors you have. It's time. What I would ask you to do is engage with the school outside of any other change of venue, additional property, parking, whatever. First, let's get that skate park so we have some time, but state law requires, and I'm gonna have the learned gentleman interject themselves when they need to, state law requires that we can't get certain grants for facilities that have less than twenty years of life. And that's one of the problems we've had in getting shade and getting other things that we would like to put in there, getting in a drinking fountain, just a number of things. We could have been applying for recreational grants forever, but we couldn't get Mr. Clark and, you know, a couple of the clowns at this, at the school district...
Now...
To get together, Tim Baird and, you know, those guys that had the big dump there.
I'd be watching, come on.
We're all neighbors.
He is.
Okay, we're all neighbors, Bob.
Not anymore.
Thank you for not referring to us as some of the clowns. You'll get to it, though.
Watch the school board meeting and see what he calls us.
And so what I would like you to do is I would like you to give, to make sure that the children of this community that, you know, have the most used outside of, um, gymnastics, the most used facility in this valley, permanently used, that we can continue to have that. All those things that councils before said were all these horror stories that we were gonna have just haven't happened, and, and it's good use for the kids and it's been good. And then the other thing I'd like my public officials over here or my, my city staff to review, uh, Mr. Clark forbade, uh, food at the skate park. What I understood is we got our fingers bent off a little when we had a food truck that showed up that was at the car contractor's office that was selling food, and the city went in and sighted the truck only to find out that, number one, the state of California controls the license on the vehicle. Number two, the county health department controls the food license, and the city had no authority.
Right.
And so we have put a prohibition and a ban on something where we never had the authority, and so it appears to me if some small little hot dog truck shows up at the skate park on Saturday, they're within the law and the kids can go over and eat a hot dog. So just, I, I don't know why we would come up with all these rules.
We're letting him...
In the pla, in the past, I'm glad we're correcting.
Right, I'm sorry, he's not here anymore.
And thank you, I wish somebody...
The face of Ho, of, of Ojai proper.
Yeah.
And, and I wish you would, you would put on the agenda or make an effort or re, ask, ask your city manager to see what we can do about getting a lease that will allow us to, to file for grants.
Absolutely.
Okay, for improvements, because it's time for repair, and I would rather get a grant for repair than take it out of our pretty tough budget.
I agree.
Thank you.
Well, you know, there's a huge, a huge benefit, Mayor, to bringing that, um, that show on Sunday to the center of our town and getting them used to that facility being the hub in the center of our town.
Yeah.
There's a good reason to, to do that and start it early.
All right, good luck. Have fun.
Easy.
Okay, so where are we on this item?
Consensus direction would be sufficient to move it forward.
You just love them.
Some of my colleagues are...
I make a motion for consensus direction.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, some, some of my colleagues are for this and some of them are opposed to it, and I stand behind my colleagues.
Yeah, they do.
Does the staff have enough?
We call that a mutual consent.
Right, okay. So, okay, items concluded, uh, council member reports. This is not mandatory, but, uh, it's an opportunity. Any? Okay. Uh, city manager report?
Well, I, I, I'm gonna say something to warm Suze's heart.
Oh?
We, I have asked the, uh, at the V, as a board member for VRSD, and I managed to, you know, convince them this was serious, that we need to look at wildfire mitigation at the landfills. We've had three of them burned over costing millions of dollars of damage, and we need to look at things, uh, in a new way in terms of wildfire mitigation, including, um, goats.
Oh, okay, now I get the part that warms my heart.
You're gonna burn goats? A goat roach? What do you have there?
The same, the same thing the fireside council is.
Don't fence me in.
Yeah. You know, the Reagan Library says that's what saved them.
Ryan's being respectful of the chair, let him speak.
Since we are warming Suze's heart, um, the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm gonna get it wrong, I think it's either every other Sunday or Thursday, but they've, they've started having the Humane Society bring puppies for adoption into the park, so on. I can't remember exactly what Sunday it is, please look it up, 'cause I'll say it wrong, but, uh, you can come down and, uh, good luck not leaving with one, but, uh, it's a wonderful, pretty cool.
Tell them to bring cats, I'm interested in some kittens.
And Randy, you can have my cats, if you want one. I have two cats, Randy, you can have either one.
I think you should go to the cat room.
No, no, I wanna get rid of rats. Let's get cats in this neighborhood.
Okay, we didn't have any reports, except our city manager now has an opportunity to...
Yeah, I just, I, uh, wanted to just mention the items that we tentatively have scheduled for the next meeting. We have, uh, we have a pretty full stacked, uh, agenda at this point. We continue the ATP item to the next meeting, so that'll be first. Um, we also have a landmarking of the eleven oh four Foothill Road that was recommended by the HPC at their last meeting, the minor work permit, uh, timeline coming back for historic permits, uh, we have animal keeping that just got approved, or recommended by the Planning Commission.
I wanna ask about that when I have a turn.
Okay, and then, um, well, uh, we have a couple of just housekeeping things like the SKA, uh, delegation of, um, uh, for the SCAG conference coming up and, uh, the commissioner item coming back, so, uh, so that, that's all I have to report at this point.
Okay, can I ask a, um, maybe I'll meet with you, but I wanted to postpone, is there anything urgent about putting animal keeping on the agenda? The reason I ask is I really want to put a lot more energy into it. I went to all the Planning Commission meetings, I would like to meet with some of the animal people and go over it so that we really have the best possible ordinance, and I've been involved lately in some animal abuse cases that are hard for the Humane Society to prosecute because of the way the laws read. There's some vagueness, so could I have, could we move that item?
Yeah, we were trying to move it through quickly at council's request, so if council is okay with the, with the...
There's no longer an pressing issue with the horses.
Okay.
And that way, and the ATP will take up some considerable time, and, uh...
I'm good with that.
And it's also possible, Bill, that you and I will have that letter done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're gonna, I'm, I'm still waiting for my revision.
We're getting one.
I did write the last one, I'm still waiting on it. I'm on pins and needles.
Yeah, right, okay, will you...
We had a few intervening, uh...
And, um, and, and, and Suze, I'm, I'm happy that you wanna do this thing, but, um, I just wanna understand it. If the planning's making a recommendation back to council, um...
That, that recommendation will come to council.
Shouldn't that come for a discussion prior to you interjecting yourself into it?
Yeah, that...
No, it has to come to us as passed.
Yeah, the Planning Commission's recommendation will come to council, but I, I'm understanding that you want time to review it with, with different interested groups, but...
You want more time to get ready to weigh in at that time.
Yeah.
Is there any objection to this, letting Suze put it in?
It'll come to us, Randy.
When she gets around to it.
It'll come to us.
It could be the next one, there's no, there's no pressing reason to have it next time, and there are some other...
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, my concern is that it's not going to be revised by you, it's gonna come to us as a whole.
No, no, no. It's gonna come just as it is, it's just that I want, I would like to go over some points with Jolene, and I have a commission meeting at Ventura County Animal Services on February the thirteenth. I just want, I have some questions to ask.
Yeah, I got it, and then I understand the concern, and we'll make sure the Planning Commission's recommended ordinance comes forward.
Right. Not a revised.
Right.
I've already interjected myself anyway. Matt said I could, so...
Future agenda items, Bill?
Uh, three. Okay, three requests. One is, I do think that we ought to, um, do a solicitation of the neighbors' feedback with respect to the, to our new recreational facility, the pickleball, very successful, very popular, and it's because of the popularity that I think we ought to do that, we ought to solicit some feedback. When we get the feedback, maybe think about some possible mitigations, like operating hour regulations or possible sound regulations, and it's just, uh, how you handle something that's overwhelmingly successful is that we put it on the agenda.
When, when that came before us, is it Tim, is he, uh, Kraus, is that the name? I thought he or somebody from the, that group said that they, uh, the pickleball industry or whatever it's called now has a ball and, and paddle.
That could be something we talked about, requiring that or something.
Right, and if, if this is exceeding the noise thing, then they, that maybe has to be a requirement, uh...
That's what I was thinking of.
Well, that's what I wanted to say, too, that the, uh, if, if it does exceed the decibel limit, and I don't know if the city has done anything on that, but this is our own property. We, we can't, we just can't lead by such a poor example.
We're moving into deliberation, the sound, all I can say is, there's different ways of measuring sound, so we do, it's something to put on the agenda to discuss.
Somehow the city measures sound when somebody makes a complaint, 'cause we hand out tickets on it, so I'm pretty sure we know how to do it. And now, now we're, for our own property, we're gonna, well, you know, who knows how you measure the sound?
Clearly launching a discussion of the item not on the agenda, but it clearly bears discussion.
I just wanna have it on the future agenda.
Yeah, we'll bring it back.
Just one que, just one, one thing to add to it, too, there's, there's, uh, two types of noises going on. One is a ball hitting a racket.
Yeah, we're deliberating, we're...
I know, I'm just saying, and the other part of it is a bunch of people laughing, giggling, and having a good time.
Let's, I just...
Okay, so we've got, we've got a request to have the, have that issue come back, do we have...
Wouldn't we want that?
Obviously, the gentleman who brought it to our attention, is that McCray? Yeah, that he, he's, yeah, Ron does not, you know, want us to wait a long while to do it, so, uh...
I mean, we get the feedback and think about it.
Yeah, yeah, we were, we were kind of working on this as, as part of the soft opening leading up to a grand opening type, you know, period, so we can bring this back. It's, we were expecting to, to do some of this work.
We all might, we might, we all might wanna address housing values in the area and see how they've gone up and down over that.
All right, can I get the number two?
Yeah, go, please, got your number two.
And this is serious, I don't want to be, you know, I'm, I'm very serious. We gotta, we have a, um, a serious problem with the green waste, we have a vacant county site, we have other uses coming in every day that, uh, you know, people are proposing and serious people are proposing in terms of, of what could be done. I would like the city manager to at least approach the county about what my, what their reaction would be to, uh, discussion about leasing the Ballin Road site.
Well, it is, it is available, the question is, is who's gonna lease it, and are you suggesting the city?
No, I've had the city lease it, we look, we, uh, uh, get a report back about the options about leasing that facility directly as a, as a city...
Okay.
For purposes of handling, uh, the, uh, what we have right now is a completely opposite to what we're supposed to be doing with climate emergency in terms of reducing carbon footprint with the, with the green waste situation, plus other op, there is other things that could be, that just are coming over the transom in terms of what might be able to be done with controlling that site for a lot of climate emergency mitigations, and I would just like to get, see whether or not it's, it's, uh, the county is even willing to discuss it with us.
I had something I'd like to add on to it, Bill, if I can. The, um, the other thing that we have to look at is what are other cities doing, and I think, I think, uh, Go Lido or Santa Barbara actually has a recycling center program that, that we might wanna look at, and two, we probably need to price tub grinders or the ability to lease tub grinders, that's your large chipping units.
Right.
So you're either gonna own them or you're gonna rent them, um, and, and that's what they were doing there.
Our sub led to an operator.
They had a grinder on a rotational basis.
I just wanna report...
Okay, guys, we're getting...
I just wanted, on the agenda...
This, well, uh...
To discuss, a report back from the city manager.
We just wanted to ask this, the, does it have to go back on the agenda? Can they just have the, the staff get the information and distribute it to us?
We can, we can always distribute it.
Unless we have a plan, this is a huge thing you're talking about, us going into the business of a, you know, recycling and green waste, it is fraught with issues, it has a history in the county, not just here in this valley, but...
And we declared a climate emergency, and this is a big step backwards, and there's something we can do about it.
Okay, I'd like to see the business plan.
Well, I agree, but it has to put on the agenda to discuss the business plan.
And if not, at Ballin Road, maybe in our city service yard, but that might get confused with pickleball.
Okay, I would support the idea of having the, the manager give us a report back if, uh, somebody has a...
You're gonna kill me.
If somebody has a business plan that would have a proposal of how this would work, otherwise, we, I don't see how we could do that in a council meeting.
And in consideration of you, Mayor, I'm gonna not mention my third one, right?
Okay, well, I, the...
We had, we had one over here on our, on our end, Mayor, what was it, continuing?
We're teaming.
We are bringing back the, um, um, battery.
Tools, if the tools break down.
Oh, yes, yes.
But it, that one, we're bringing back, but it wasn't necess, I wasn't planning to bring it at the next meeting unless it's...
Okay, I, I think that we are going to need to give some structure to, uh, the agenda process. We used to have one, uh, I have to confess that I, I did come up with the idea of letting us all do this at council meetings, thinking that way we wouldn't have just one or two people beating on the city manager, but there should be an actual, anything we're gonna put on the agenda should actually have a report that goes with it.
Yes.
So, so those of us who wanna put something on the agenda need to outline that sort of thing before we decide we're gonna put it on.
Well, we followed your protocols, Bill and I did the solar investigation. We put a lot of time and effort before we brought it back to council. That's what you're saying.
Uh, yeah.
You'll have to see more of that.
Yeah, right, but, as was suggested to me, that we have a, a time limit, but we may, we should have a numbers limit. It's hard to determine how long each item will take. The more structure we give to it, the more items we can have, the more just, you know, loose conversation, uh...
We're gonna have to draw straws on that, because some people raise their hand faster and speak quicker.
He's looking at me.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna look down at this end. Is there anybody down here who has a, okay, and Bill, Bill has waved his third idea until next week or something?
Yes, I have.
Okay, okay, uh, what do we, uh, then we're...
Wait, 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 I wanna hear from Chief Jose Rivera how his first, uh, two weeks was. Come on.
Right, okay, the meeting's adjourned, but we want the chief to talk to us, yeah, go, yeah.
My first week was great, the second one not so great, because I caught the fluke of my wife.
Oh, wow.
I was down and out for a good four or five days.
Well, you made the meeting, so it's not a strike, it's not a, a nick against you. Four of them, and we're looking for your replacement.
Have, have, have you brought the kids to the playground yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Oh, you'd love that.
Two of them almost made it up.
All right, and don't forget the ice cream run, you know, after the playground.
Don't bring them on puppy day.
I don't think I'll be able to get them out of here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, after, after the chief recovers from his illness, we're gonna have him give a report at our next meeting on how things went, okay? Okay, great to have you with us.
Yeah.
Okay, we're done for tonight.